Hello, I am Vice Mayor Betsy Nash and welcome to the June 3 special city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Roll call. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Cecilia Taylor, Jeff Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. Mayor Combs will be joining later this evening. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nero Doherty and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor and again echoing a welcome to our special June 3 city council meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda. After the Vice Mayor or Mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at this table to my right and provide that to me. If you are participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature and if you're calling in, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Next is closed session. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment for closed session items C1, C2 and C3.
Yes, thank you Vice Mayor. So for any member of the public who's here to speak on our closed session items C1, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, C2, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation or C3, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. If you are in person, you can complete one of those speaker cards, return that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session items C1, 2 and 3. Seeing none, Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. The city council will now adjourn to the closed session and intends to reconvene at approximately 6:30 PM.
Mayor Drew Combs and we are reconvening the special June 3 city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with the city council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Also, the city council discourages applause, booing or other similar behaviors from the public during meetings. If such conduct continues, I may call a recess, request the removal of such persons from the city council meeting, adjourn the meeting or take other similar appropriate actions. Roll call. I'd like to reintroduce the city council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council members Cecilia Taylor, Jeff Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Narodh Doherty and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. So for members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card located at this table to my right and return that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature and if you're calling in, you can press star nine. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Heron. I'd like to introduce City Attorney Narodh Doherty to report out from the closed session.
Thank you Mayor Combs. The city council did not complete its conference with legal counsel under closed session, so we will continue the closed session to the end of the meeting and report out following closed session.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the study session portion of the meeting. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. In order to gauge the number of speakers on this item and ensure everyone has an opportunity to provide comment, I will ask City Clerk Heron to call for public comment at this time. We will then proceed to the staff presentation and following that, open this item for public comment.
Thank you Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public here or virtual is here to speak on our study session item G1 related to development on downtown parking plazas, we ask that if you are in person, you complete those speaker cards and return them to me here at the clerk's desk. And if you are virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. And if you're calling in, please press star nine. And with that, I will return it to the mayor.
All right, thank you Clerk Heron. This study session is to review and discuss responses to the request for qualifications for development on downtown parking plazas one, two and/or three and provide direction on next steps. Here to introduce the item is Principal Planner Tom Smith.
Good evening Mayor Combs and members of the city council. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to review and discuss responses to the city's request for qualifications for downtown development on parking plazas one, two and three and for the city council to provide direction to staff on next steps in the process, potentially including a request for proposals to certain development teams. The RFQ was released as an initial step to identify interested development teams, their qualifications and their ability to meet certain minimum requirements as part of any future development, which I will discuss briefly in the next slide. The goal of the project is to meet local housing needs by providing housing that's close to downtown jobs, services and transit, and it was included in the city's housing element as program H4G. The key objectives of the project are to provide at least 345 affordable housing units as part of any development, to provide public parking to replace existing surface spaces, to help meet the city's regional housing needs allocation identified in the housing element and to improve downtown vitality by providing the potential for an increased residential base and possible community benefits like new pocket parks and open spaces. There's a map on the right side of the slide just to help everybody orient to the plazas that we're discussing downtown. Santa Cruz Avenue runs through the middle in that teal color and we're specifically talking this evening about parking plazas one, two and three north or above that line that's shown there. And then there are five other parking plazas numbered four through eight south of Santa Cruz Avenue which are not part of this discussion at this time. In January 2023, the adopted housing element identified eight downtown parking plazas as potential housing sites. And in August 2024, a feasibility study found that plazas one, two and three would be the most suitable for development. In January of this year, an RFQ was issued to solicit developer interest and on March 31st, the city received seven developer responses. Later on that week, on April 4th, the responses were published on the city website for public The seven RFQ submittals received were from Alliant Communities, Eden Housing, MidPen Housing, Path Ventures, Presidio Bay Ventures, Related Companies and the Pacific Companies. The seven development teams have significant amounts of experience in constructing and managing housing developments throughout California with many of them having Bay Area experience and three having completed or ongoing projects in Menlo Park. I won't go into the details of the table on this slide, but there is a complete summary of the number of housing units, the amounts of proposed parking, sustainability highlights, initial phasing approaches, community engagement approach and other features from each submittal in attachment D of the staff report. Five of the seven teams provided development concepts that included some level of detail about what development could look like across the three sites and those were Alliant Communities, Eden Housing, MidPen Housing, Presidio Bay Ventures and Related Companies. Two of the other submittals from Path Ventures and the Pacific Companies did not include the same level of detailed concepts and had fewer overall specifics compared to the other five. Among the five teams that did provide concepts, there were some similarities. All of them prioritized housing affordability which ranged between 30 and 120% of area median income. The concepts that did specify potential heights generally mentioned buildings between four and eight stories on the sites. And the concepts that provided conceptual timelines indicated that development would be complete between 2029 and 2032. The parking strategies varied among the submittals that did submit concepts. Of the five, four planned for replacement public parking an amount between 506 or 514 or more spaces and resident parking was described as between approximately 32 up to 345 spaces depending on the submittal. The Eden Housing concept indicated that an area would be reserved for a future garage, but the garage would have to be funded by the city. The Presidio Bay Ventures concept also had a little bit of a unique feature compared to the others that provided concepts and it described a shared parking approach based on time of day that would allow for 506 spaces of public parking during business hours and then in the evening, some of those spaces would switch over to resident parking for 345 resident spaces. In April, staff provided a feedback form on the city webpage for the project to gather input on the RFQ submittals. We received 141 responses and that was timed through the publication of the staff report on Wednesday of last week. The primary concerns that were mentioned in the feedback were generally about parking availability downtown, the potential for traffic congestion, the potential scale of buildings and heights and potential construction impacts and how those might disrupt businesses downtown. There were some conditional indications of support, as long as adequate parking was provided as part of any development. And the comments that did address specific thoughts on certain submittals included stated preferences for Alliant Communities, MidPen Housing, Presidio Bay Ventures and Related Companies. There were mentions of those four throughout. There were also requests for alternative locations to be explored, primarily the USGS site and Civic Center. And I would note that the USGS site was included in the housing element as a potential housing site already and the Civic Center was evaluated during the housing element process but ultimately not selected, which was discussed at a meeting in March, a couple of months back. I would also note that since the publication of the staff report, there were I would also note that since the publication of the staff report, there were a number of comments of support and a few in opposition to the project that were received today in the council email log. And in terms of recommended next steps, staff is recommending that issuance of an RFP be the next step to seek, which would allow us to seek more detailed development concepts and information from certain development teams that the council, if the council would like to move forward with that. Staff is recommending developer teams that would be receiving the RFP to be Alliant Communities, MidPen Housing, Presidio Bay Ventures, and Related Companies based on the amount of information that was included in their concepts and their indication of their ability to meet the minimum requirements that were stated. There's an RFP outline provided in Attachment M of the staff report, and we would ask that if council is interested in moving forward with an RFP, that you confirm the proposed topics to be included in that RFP, so looking at the development vision, housing program, parking strategy, financial proposal, implementation plan, community benefits and engagement, and the teams and experience. And there's some more details about each of those categories within Attachment M. So return to the direction that we're seeking from city council this evening would be to review and discuss the RFQ responses, to provide direction on next steps in the process. If council wishes to issue an RFP, identifying the developer teams that would receive that RFP, and then providing any feedback on the proposed RFP outline. And if an RFP was selected as the next step in the process, then staff would aim to return this summer 2025 with that RFP draft for review by the city council. And that concludes my presentation.
City Clerk Heron, please do a final call for public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, this will be our final call for public comment on our study session item G1 related to the development on downtown parking plazas. If you are in person, you can return those speaker cards. If you are participating virtually, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Uh, no. We have a few more. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have 35 speakers in queue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Heron. We'll limit public comment to one minute and 30 seconds per speaker. And before we formally go into public comment, I mean, obviously, it is your time, and you can speak as long as it's respectful on any topic or any aspect of what's before the council that you want. But I would encourage you that your comment is most effective when focused on the item that is specifically before council. And what is before council is to provide direction on this specific proposal. And so what is not before council is to consider the Civic Plaza or to consider other sites. What is before council is what direction it wants to give about going forward on specifically the parking plazas. And so my suggestion is that, again, that your public comment can be most effective if it's tailored to that issue. But again, it's your time, and you can say whatever you want to say, as long as it's respectful. With that, Clerk Heron, we can start the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Our first speaker will be Lydia Lee, followed by Will Ausler and Francesca Ensler.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lydia Lee. I'm with Bike Menlo Park, and I want to say how excited I am as a longtime resident since the 1990s here in Menlo Park to see more density and more housing coming to downtown. And also looking at the RFPs that you have coming your way, I just had this thought that if you have the chance, as you get closer to making a final decision, to, I recognize some of the names of these developers, and I think you have a chance to do an informal tour of some of the developments they have here in the Bay Area. That would be a really great way to get a sense of what they've delivered in the past. I mean, you know, I think you can, everyone can make a great pitch, but the proof is in the pudding, right? So, thank you so much.
The next speaker is Will Ausler, followed by Francesca Ensler, and then Lucy Brown.
Good evening, city council. I'm Will Ausler, District 3 resident. I serve on the Housing Commission, but tonight I'm speaking as a private resident, and I'll keep my, oh, sorry. Good evening, I'm Will Ausler, I'm a District 3 resident. I serve on the Housing Commission, but tonight I'm speaking as a private resident. I believe the housing crisis demands swift and equitable action from Menlo Park. I think the housing element and this project was shaped through extensive state and community input. In reviewing the RFQ responses, I was especially encouraged to see several teams propose parking positive plans. I believe that this is worth looking at further, and I hope that we issue an RFQ swiftly. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker up is Francesca Ensler, followed by Lucy Bowen. And the microphone is adjustable, so feel free to bring that up close to you so we can all hear. Thank you.
Okay, hello, my name is Francesca. I also go by Frankie, and I am speaking today on behalf of Menlo Together, as well as supporters of affordable housing. I would first like to thank city council for all of your time and effort on this project and working to get the ball rolling. As you know, Menlo Together has collected many names and signatures on a petition, as well as spoken with neighbors, and we've heard a lot of support for these homes downtown. This project is especially meaningful to me, and I got involved partly because I am a substitute teacher with Sequoia Union High School District, and I work mainly at Menlo Atherton High School. My salary puts me in the low-income range, and I was very surprised to learn that, based on my income, I could qualify for one of these homes. So I just want to again thank city council. It's really meaningful for me to see that support for people like me. I would also like to say that this expands to many other people and professions that are very important to our community, and I invite our supporters here today to hold up some images of some people that we would be able to support and welcome into our community like me, who is a substitute teacher. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lucy Bowen, followed by Nels Delander and Scott Beal.
I am Lucy Bowen. I'm 78 years old. I've lived in Menlo Park for 31 years, and I would like to encourage you to proceed to give the city staff what they need to move ahead, because I think this element, this housing element, will add much-needed vitality to the city. Thank you.
Next up is Nels Delander, followed by Scott Beal, and then Richard Drager.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is Nels Delander, and I'm a representative of Carpenters Local 217 of Samatail County. The request of proposals of the development of downtown parking plazas should include labor standards that protect workers for our own community. In the request for proposals, labor standards should be implemented that require contractors to utilize state-accredited apprenticeship programs that promote professionalism and safety, contractors that provide access to health care, contractors that pay livable wages, and use local labor. Above all, I hope this development does not become one that exploits the rare workforce that builds it. Instead, let it be the model for how developments can uplift the workers and empower the community of Menlo Park. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Scott Beal, Richard Drager, and Michael Ochoa.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and fellow community members. My name is Scott Beal, and I'm here on behalf of more than 1,700 union members and their families who live in Menlo Park, representing the broader labor community, not just construction trades. We are committed to strong workforce standards that support opportunity, equity, and community well-being. First, thank you for addressing the need for housing. Change is never easy, but without it, will never ease the burden on thousands of families struggling with the high cost of living in this region. Tonight, I urge you to prioritize developers who reflect Menlo Park's values, especially those committed to local hiring, workforce training, and long-term partnerships with community-based labor. These are principles clearly outlined in Attachment M. You referred to that earlier today, particularly in paragraph 7 of the city's RFQ under community benefits, including proactive outreach to local businesses and commitments to hiring local labor. And if there are development teams here tonight or listening, I urge you to reach out to the building trades and have a genuine conversation and allow us to work together. Let's make this more than a housing development. It can be a model for community-centered, workforce-driven development. Thank you.
Next is Richard Drager, and then Michael Ochoa and Armando Mario.
Honorable mayor and city council members, my name is Richard Drager of Drager Supermarkets, and we all recognize the urgency of creating affordable housing and how necessary this is for businesses such as our own and the other businesses in downtown Menlo Park. The problem with the current proposal isn't the mission, it's the location. It's very clear that the best of RFQ submittals indicates as long as four and a half years of construction period. A build-out of this length of time would devastate the downtown business community. The livelihoods of thousands of our downtown employees would be destroyed. The surrounding residential community would lose the amenities of the downtown, and the Menlo Park property values would of course be damaged, probably severely. There are other locations that do not cause business closures and job losses, such as here at Civic Center, SRI, Bellhaven, and others, USGS. Also changing the zoning in several areas surrounding the downtown would dramatically improve the number of feasible sites. Shoehorning business buildings as high as eight stories onto crucially needed parking plazas is not a solution. Be honest with the real cost. We can do better than this current proposal. This proposal appropriates 50% of our parking plazas and declares them surplus land and deserves a vote by our Menlo Park citizens. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Michael Ochoa, followed by Armando Mario, and then Ann Ausler.
Excuse me. Good evening, council. My name is Michael Ochoa. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me speak. Union carpenters have been solutions oriented around what labor standards state, regional, and local public agencies should adopt for housing funded with public dollars. We worked with staff and through the public process to advance a set of high-road labor requirements that would already have been adopted by the state for all 58 counties. Last year, this council affirmed its support for these standards in voting to approve the carpenters-approved labor standard for the BAFA bond measures. These standards, which include a combination of prevailing wages, healthcare, excuse me, healthcare expenditures, and apprentice employment opportunities, ensure that benefits are received by all workers involved in the project regardless of union affiliation. I'm here today to ask that you continue your support for construction workers by including these same labor standards in the downtown parking plaza RFP. Excuse me. Adding strong labor standards to the RFP as well as enhanced enforcement mechanisms will level the playing field for high-road contractors who have to compete against low-bidding companies whose business models do not invest in workers or the community. In order to build a thriving residential construction workforce in Menlo Park and Samatail County, we need standards will raise the bar for all residential construction workers. Including prevailing wages, healthcare expenditures, and apprenticeship requirements in the RFP will do just that. And ensure that public-funded projects like this will create opportunities for construction. For these reasons, we ask that you support MidPen, that you include strong labor standards in the final RFP for the downtown parking plaza development. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Armando Mario, followed by Ann Ausler, and then Alex Beltramo.
Good evening, honorable mayor, fellow city council members, staff, and members in attendance here this evening. My name is Armando Mario, and I'm a field representative for Carpenters Local 217. I'm echoing in on my colleagues' main points as well. But again, I'd like to express that developments on downtown parking plazas 1, 2, and/or 3 have the potential of becoming great assets to the community and the citizens of Menlo Park by providing much-needed housing to rapidly growing population. Construction, constructing new aesthetically pleasing developments and providing jobs to men and women who will build these projects is again crucial for the growth and prosperity of this city. We would like to see the workers on this project taken care of in a fair manner and not exploited for their skills and labor. Moreover, to make sure that workers are protected, this project needs to be built by a responsible contractor, one that pays area standard wages, provides healthcare benefits for its workers, promotes state-approved apprenticeship programs, and supports a local hiring practice. The men and women need a livable wage in order to care for themselves, their families, and to be able to afford to live in this community. As we know, inflation is always on the rise, and the cost of housing isn't coming down. These people work in one of the most dangerous professions in our country and need healthcare for themselves and their dependents in order to remain productive and not become reliant on public-assisted healthcare programs. In addition, having trained apprentices on this project from state-accredited programs will foster career paths for years to come while ensuring that projects like these are built in a safe and timely manner. Lastly, by adopting a local hiring practice, we can ensure that members from our community will be working on these projects and not working from, and not workers from out of state or elsewhere who will have less interest and take less pride in their work. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ann Ausler, followed by Alex Beltramo and Keith Quiggins.
Hello, council. My name is Ann, and I live in District 3 of Menlo Park. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for all of your hard work over the years pushing Menlo Park to include more affordable housing. There are many phenomenal proposals being considered here tonight. I urge you to focus on plans with detail and experience. If possible, I would love to see mixed-use spaces so that our first floors can be used for more wonderful businesses to help our downtown as well as affordable housing. I'm incredibly heartened by some of the plans which might help bring more families and people of diverse backgrounds together in downtown Menlo Park. Again, thank you for all of your hard work over the years in bringing affordable housing to Menlo Park.
Next is Alex Beltramo, followed by Keith Quiggins, and then Wayne Robert Ott.
Good evening, city council. Our downtown is built around two key public assets. The first is Santa Cruz Avenue, a beautiful, wide, tree-lined avenue which connects our business district to the El Camino. The second asset consists of the eight downtown parking lots, which provide the essential infrastructure to allow thousands of people each day to easily come and go to enjoy our downtown and all that its 200 businesses have to offer. In the last six months, two things have become very clear. One, the people of Menlo Park and our neighbors love downtown Menlo. Two, the people of Menlo Park believe that putting high-density housing onto the parking lots will- lots will essentially cut off access to the downtown, and because of that, we will lose the businesses that we depend on, and we will lose the downtown we love. Despite overwhelming opposition from the people of Menlo Park, the plans to redevelop the parking lots just keep moving forward. That is why Save Downtown Menlo is doing a citizens initiative. If passed, it would create an ordinance that requires that any plan to use the downtown parking lots for anything other than parking must first be put to a vote by the people of Menlo Park. This decision is too important and too permanent to be decided in any other way. Thank you.
The next speaker is Keith Quiggins, followed by Wayne Robert Ott and Karen Glaser.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Keith Quiggins. I'm the current president of the Menlo Park Design District, and as a business owner here, I think that it's incredibly important that we look at all of the problems that could be caused by four to five years, maybe longer. I mean, I know how long it takes to get a project through planning here as it is. So we've already lost one major downtown business that said that they did not want to stay any longer when their lease was up because of the threat of the parking being removed. I really hope that we can get this resolved with other properties than to be downtown on the parking lots as well. Please open Santa Cruz Avenue. Two businesses only benefit from this. A lot of other businesses are being hurt. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Wayne Robert Ott, followed by Karen Glaser and Mary Seaton.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Robert Ott, and I own two homes in Menlo Park that I have engaged very happy tenants who live there. I've rented these homes for more than thirty years. Like me, my tenants enjoy the charming downtown restaurants and the stores, and especially, most important, the downtown parking. My tenants are very concerned about a possible reduction in the number of downtown parking spaces. The plan to disrupt the three downtown parking lots will cause my tenants enormous inconvenience, and I expect myself to see a decrease in my property values. My two homes have provided a pleasant place for people to live in Menlo Park for more than thirty years, and I believe the reduction in downtown parking will seriously damage the necessary balance between parking and downtown stores and restaurants. During that long-time period, I've experienced about eight tenants, four babies born, two marriages, and one divorce. All very happy to live there. I think this consideration caused by the state, really initially, will be a disaster for the beautiful community of Menlo Park, and I object strongly to the idea of going forward, and I support the idea of voters making a decision as in a democracy for the land in which they live. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Karen Glaser, followed by Mary Seaton and Amaya Anu.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Karen Glaser, and I'm a longtime homeowner in this town. I've lived here for sixty-five years, and I really do love this town and know it well. I really am sorry that I feel the need that I have to appeal to you to save our parking lots. There aren't enough parking spaces now. I oftentimes can't find one. And saying that the parking lots are surplus land is just plain crazy. It's not surplus land, it's much, much needed. If you remove one-half of the parking lots, people will stop coming to do business in Menlo Park. The restaurants, the shops, and the non-retail businesses will suffer and may have to leave. As stewards of Menlo Park, you should want this town to flourish economically. Businesses need places for their customers to park. Having high-rise, low-income housing in the middle of other buildings downtown would look terrible. With no one coming to town, it would become a ghost town. Instead of pushing something through that no one wants, why not put the entire matter up for a vote for all Menlo Park residents? High-density housing does nothing good for Menlo Park, and the construction alone would turn the Menlo Park area into a traffic disaster. Thank you.
Speaker will be Mary Seaton, followed by Amaya Anu, and then Margot Gordon.
Good evening, Council. Whoa. I'm gonna add a little humor, and then I'll discuss some things. One business, two business, three business, four. Look there, please look there. Now there's no more. The council members, they sat there. They sat there, all five, trying to ensure our city would not survive. They sat there and sat there and pretended to hear, but did not listen to the people in fear. The people, they said, in the parking lot they should not be. We told them and warned them destruction they'd see. We told them and warned them, we don't like it one bit. Please heed the warning, our city will go broke, broke as in no money, and this is no joke. Council, please choose another available site. If you don't, then the future of our downtown will not look bright. The downtown parking lot housing plan are not realistic, they're not feasible, practical, and most of all, they're not safe. These lots are configured that they do not have adequate width on any of the three lots that have been selected. We would need to eliminate all the perimeter buildings, all the businesses on Oak Grove, University Drive, and Santa Cruz to widen the streets for proper and safe ingress and egress. This would not only create congestion, but create a safety issue for our Menlo Park first responders. This was brought up in the discussion at the January Fire Board meeting, where Menlo Park Fire Department considered my concerns in regard-
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
What?
So you have to be mindful of the time. You have to be mindful of the timer. Thank you.
Is it over?
Yeah. It's been over for a while now.
Next speaker will be Amaya Anu, followed by Margot Gordon, and then Colette Seaton.
Hi, my name is Amaya, and I'm eleven years old. I just finished my sixth grade year at IHM. For my seventh grade summer math homework, I was assigned a city planning project in which I will be finding the area and perimeter of each building, as well as using the scale. One square equals ten feet. I decided to start with the downtown Menlo Park parking lot. Three, and try placing some of the proposed buildings right in between the existing buildings. I tried numerous different ways and cannot get it to work. I emailed my teacher with my concern, my concerns, and she said I would have to pick another site because it wasn't feasible. There is no room for cars to enter and exit, there is no handicap parking, there is no parking for businesses. Furthermore, it would create more traffic and would not look good. Just like my teacher urged me to find another site for my project, I would encourage you to find another site for yours.
The next speaker will be Margot Gordon, followed by Colette Seaton, and then Adina Levin.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is for my neighbor here that had surgery today.
Yeah, this is not the way we do public comment.
I'm sorry, but she had called in to Judy and got information.
Did she?
Yes, she did, and she sent the recording to me as well as a backup if this didn't work out.
So you're gonna play a recording of her?
I'm playing the recording that she, yeah, because she had knee surgery today, but whatever. If I can't do it, then I can't.
If Judy has said you can do it, you can do it.
Okay, well, okay, let me start it again then. Ah, what happened?
If you'd like, I can bring up the recording.
Oh, can you print it now?
I can have it play.
As mayor comes, there is an additional eighteen seconds left. We want to continue.
We'll let it.
Okay, thank you. So the next speaker will be Colette Seaton, followed by Adina Levin and Rob Foster.
Tonight, I would like to voice my concerns with the potential downtown affordable housing project and declaring these parking lots as surplus land. To clarify, the downtown parking lots are not surplus. For the record, the definition of surplus is overplus or excess beyond what is prescribed, needed, or wanted. These lots are being utilized by the businesses and visitors. They are not surplus by any sense of the definition. I can assure all of you that this is not a downtown revitalization project. It will not bring business, which is why ninety-five percent of the downtown businesses are against building on these utilized parking lots. In fact, this proposed project will cause destruction to the downtown businesses. Why would any business sign a lease or renew their lease knowing the details of these projects? It will create many years of construction and eventually lead to increased traffic, congestion, and numerous safety issues that have not been adequately studied or addressed. How will the city pay for the millions and millions of dollars of expenses to replace adequate parking? In the words of one of the council members, "Don't worry, we'll just pass some bonds." Where will an additional three hundred to five hundred kids attend schools? Oh, we'll figure that out later. There's no room for a new school at or near the downtown parking lots. Where will the residents of these affordable housing units park? Oh, we'll figure that out later, too. It's discriminatory to think that lower-income people do not own or drive cars. Where will the visitors to the downtown businesses park? Oh, we'll figure that out later. It seems as if the council is trying to brush-
I'm gonna ask you to start to wrap up.
That has too many unanswered questions. You can't squeeze juice from a turnip, it just won't work. Let's explore the Civic Center site, where, as we discussed in the past, it is able to accommodate thousands of people, first responders, and vehicles. There are underutilized spaces, and it just makes sense. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Adina Levin, followed by Rob Foster, and then Roberta Alquist.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. Throughout the robust discussion on the housing element and consideration of various different sites, there was a lot of encouragement for downtown locations because of the proximity to services and public transportation. Just in the last week, I attended an Affordable Housing Month event at the location of Kikku Crossing downtown San Mateo, where they built affordable housing on a downtown parking lot. They did robust replacement parking, they used shared parking, they provide transit passes, they have a really big and well-used bike room, and a lot of strategies to help make that work for the residents and for the city to help with affordability. I really do encourage you to move forward and to work thoughtfully on solutions to the very real issues of parking and access that can be done. This is not unique. There are multiple cities in our area that have built and are building more housing, including affordable housing, in the downtown, and doing transportation demand management strategies, as has been doing in San Mateo. Also urge you to be attentive to mitigating the construction issues that are valid issues and can be mitigated. If we do not do this and break our housing element, we are going to be vulnerable to developments and lose control over our ability to influence our destiny and the types of housing and development that we accommodate. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Rob Foster, followed by Roberta Alquist, and then Jennifer Schindler.
Thank you. I'm Rob Foster. I'm here to support a successful plan to build affordable housing in Menlo Park, and I'm here to support the process the city council is following to collect data about this project. The city has collected public feedback and received seven RFQ responses. It will be critical to take an objective look at this data in order to guide this project to success. So I looked at the data. The city received one hundred and forty-one comments. Ninety-four percent of the respondents have grave concerns about the project as currently conceived. We can do better. The city also received seven RFQ responses. So I looked at that data. Unaditable funding. Two developers, both Eden Housing and Related Alta, stated that affordable housing funds cannot be used to build public parking. Higher costs. Choosing the parking plazas forces two factors that dramatically increase the cost: a forty-million-dollar parking ramp for replacement parking, and the use of steel and concrete materials to build the five-to-eight-level buildings. This will strain the financial viability of the project. We can do better. This housing project must succeed, but the data the city has collected points toward failure. If the city requests RFQs for just the parking plazas, there is likely to be a best proposal, but best compared to what? We need more data about alternate locations. The next steps should include a financial impact analysis on the businesses over the four to five years of construction, a financial feasibility analysis of the five-to-eight-story buildings for three hundred and forty-five units, and an exploration of alternate locations. Thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Roberta Alquist, followed by Jennifer Schindler, and then Peg Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Roberta Alquist. First of all, I'd like to applaud the city and the council for moving toward housing downtown. It's time. And it's strange that we're pitting housing against parking, and you're gonna choose parking over housing. The question, a question which I think needs to be thought about is what's- The question, a question which I think needs to be thought about is what's affordable? Affordable to whom? We have a critical need, not only in Menlo Park, but in the entire state for low, moderate-income housing, very low-income housing, including housing that is multi-ethnic and intergenerational downtown, yes. Menlo Park can lead the way as a model for surrounding communities. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Jennifer Schindler, followed by Peg Taylor, and then Eduardo Pilarri-Lopart.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Schindler, Menlo Park Planning Commissioner, but I am speaking on my own behalf and not as a commissioner this evening. I strongly support more affordable housing in Menlo Park, especially affordable downtown housing, and ask you to move forward with issuing the RFP for developing the downtown parking lots. Affordable, I support affordable housing in Menlo Park because affordable housing creates opportunities to enrich our community, but for people who, sorry, affordable housing creates opportunities for people who deeply enrich our community but who aren't making two to three times the area median income. Affordable housing brings us neighbors like teachers, physical therapists, hairstylists, your favorite waiters, people who work at bookstores and nonprofits. Affordable housing creates opportunities for people in the early stages of building careers and families. It brings us neighbors like recent college graduates in entry-level positions or working couples with a new baby who are now facing crazy-high childcare costs for the very first time. Downtown housing is especially important, and especially when it's affordable, is good for Menlo Park. More housing downtown means more people living their day-to-day lives downtown. It means more people spending money downtown. We will see more people downtown walking dogs and strollers, holding a cup of coffee, grabbing a sandwich, picking up milk and bread, chatting with their friends on a bench. I strongly support moving ahead with the RFP process without additional delay. I would suggest adding Eden back to the list, and I would suggest, in the outline of the RFP criteria, encouraging but not requiring developers to add scenarios that indicate the trade-offs between a couple of different options. That was a very constructive component of many of the RFQ responses. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Peg Taylor, followed by Eduardo Pilarri-Lopart, and then Leslie Wambach.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Peg Taylor. I'm a longtime resident of Menlo Park, and I will be an employee of a business downtown in Menlo Park starting Monday. But I and my family are in opposition to continuing to spend time and resources on an unlikely development downtown that will never succeed in meeting the state's housing objectives. These ideas represented in these RFQs will not most likely require issuing bonds in the tens of millions to build an expensive parking structure. That is not where I want my tax dollars to be used. I urge you to put this proposal on hold and instead explore other areas for this needed development, including other districts, an area with more land and the civic center. Let's please not destroy our downtown and our businesses downtown. Let's work together to revive the downtown in a different way. Many citizens of Menlo Park are energized to do this and want to help you if you let them. Let's not double down on unachievable and explore another way. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eduardo Pilarri-Lopart, followed by Leslie Wambach, and then Rich Johnson.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Eduardo Pilarri-Lopart, and I live in the Willows. I support downtown housing and the RFE proposal from staff, but I also appreciate the concerns about parking. In parallel with the RFP, we need to more data about our parking needs. I'm looking forward to the detailed report on their use of the parking plazas to grant future discussions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Leslie Wambach, followed by Rich Johnson, and then Elsa Schaefer.
Good evening, City Council. First, I'd just like to thank you for getting this far on this proposal. I've been an area resident for over thirty years, and for almost all of those thirty years, I have always wondered, why aren't we looking at these parking areas for housing? I'm also an architect, and so I'm familiar with this type of thing. I'm sorry that there's people in this room that aren't understanding this vision, but I personally believe that there is huge potential here. I'm an avid shopper and a diner in downtown Menlo Park. I've always shopped here. I love Draggers. I think it's a fabulous supermarket. I've never had difficulty parking. I think it is important that parking definitely be considered and accommodated, but as best I've read, that's part of the plan, so I don't really have a huge concern there. I, I think we definitely need more local shoppers, though, because I have to tell you, I was counting the vacant stores on Santa Cruz recently, and it's kind of looking sad. And I think having more pedestrian shoppers downtown would actually greatly benefit the businesses. I know that change is hard. I have dealt with that my entire career with my clients. Change is hard, but, and sometimes it's hard to visualize just how good a different way of solving a problem can be. But I believe the professionals that are being consulted can get us there, and so I definitely support the staff's recommendation as is. I especially like the Alliant description of support services for residents. And I would also say that I would really like to see some specificity around providing housing for the disability community. It's a huge problem. I personally have a family member with a disability, and housing for this population is tough because they are on fixed incomes. So I'd like to see the.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yes, wrapping up. I'd really like to see the affordability lowered further to accommodate acutely-low-income folks, which constitutes the disability population. Thank you so much.
The next speaker will be Rich Johnson, followed by Elsa Schaefer, and then John McKenna.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Thank you very much. It's my third time standing up here. Not the strongest public speaker, but I think I know what I'm talking about. The, the project, first of all, my objection to the project, a strong objection, is just the cost of replacing the parking. I think we're going to crush our retail tax base. As has been mentioned, folks are already, businesses are already leaving the downtown. I think that's going to continue. I actually, you know, I've been a thirty-three-year resident of Menlo Park. I rarely, I can't remember the last time I got fired up about a project like this. I'm actually a developer, so I'm one of those rare guys that I want to see building. I just think what you're trying to do downtown is just flat-out wrong. And so I'll keep on standing up and saying my piece, even if it kind of feels like it's a waste of time, to be honest. The, the business of, you know, responding to the RFQs, I think it sort of said it all in the, in the staff report. I'm going to note here somewhere. It basically said, and I cut, copied, and pasted this. Basically said, "The community feedback. The majority of the feedback expressed in opposition to developing housing in the downtown parking plazas, with consistent themes emerging across multiple responses." That's a direct cut and paste from your staff report. Then it goes on to say, "Next steps," never mind. Based on the review of the RFQ responses, staff recommends that the next step in the development process be preparation and issuance of an RFP. You're not listening. Staff aren't listening. Staff have made their mind up that they're going to do this. This is the same staff that did not get the housing element completed in time, which is why Eighty Willows exists. That's why it exists, because the housing element wasn't processed on time. And now, we're going to make the same mistake, same staff with downtown. Would you please look at the fourteen acres of civic center? This truly is surplus land. Burlingame just bought themselves a new city hall.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
You can do the same. You have fourteen acres of land here. Instead, you're trying to ram it downtown. It's not going to work. It's going to be a lawsuit, waste of money, waste of time, waste of resources. I'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Elsa Schaefer, followed by John McKenna, and then Ken Chan.
I'm so glad you realize I'm not there. I'm Elsa Schaefer. I live in West.
Elsa, are you able to increase the volume on your side?
Yes. Do you hear me now? This is as high as I get.
Perfect. That'll work. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm so grateful, City Council, for your delivering this fabulous downtown plan. And I think it will do nothing other than make our, our whole downtown area much more vibrant. Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you are really focusing on parking, which has become the number-one concern of those who are against it. It's especially helpful, I think, to bring those shoppers who actually will live there into our downtown, not taking up more parking spaces nor adding to pollution. None of them need to drive there. What a boon it'll be to our businesses. We now having and continuing to have for a long time, twenty percent of our stores empty. That doesn't help anything. Focusing on parking, I do hope in the, in the bids that come in and in what you're asking for, you will ask that we add more actual spaces than are there right now. Because so many people have experienced, and me occasionally too, times when it's really hard to find a space. I think that major concern of others, or at least the one they give, will disappear if the creative areas some of you are looking at can be used to bring in more spaces. And I'm so grateful to you for doing this. Thank you.
The next speaker will be John McKenna, followed by Ken Chan, and then Carol Shepherd.
Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, fellow council members and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is John McKenna, a twenty-year resident of Menlo Park. I want to express my full support for affordable housing on the downtown parking lots. This new housing will show the true character of Menlo Park, a city that strives to be inclusive, equitable, and affordable for multiple levels of income. As cities adapt to the needs of its residents, change is necessary. I found the responses to the RFQ intriguing, and I look forward to reviewing the proposals that will be submitted in response to the RFP. I do encourage council to direct staff to include Eden Housing and Pass Ventures in the RFP process. Both responded to the RFQ appropriately, and I look forward to seeing more detailed RFP responses. Pass, in particular, offered some very compelling concepts and a unique approach to housing that I strongly feel is worthy of greater consideration by the city. Lastly, I recently visited Mid Penn's Kikku Crossing in downtown, downtown San Mateo, an attractive, affordable housing project and an excellent use of land for the overall good of the community. This type of quality, affordable housing will be a welcomed and much-needed new addition to downtown Menlo Park. Thank you to city staff for your exemplary work on this effort, and thank you to council for your continued direction and leadership.
And our next speaker will be Ken Chan, Carol Shepherd, and then Alexa Leon Prado.
Good evening, Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council, San Mateo County.
I'm not quite sure how to help you with that.
We work with committees and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I first like to thank staff for their hard work on their report and presentation. On behalf of HLC, I want to highlight the city-owned land downtown is one of your city's best resources for creating one-hundred-percent-deeply-affordable homes. And we support your efforts to create these homes on your city-owned lots downtown. Just to highlight some points from our letter, no matter which proposal you select, we encourage you to include a shared parking management strategy between the residential proposal and the parking, and the public parking lots, and to also increase the height limit to eight floors. This can add more homes at the eighty-percent-area median income and make homes at the thirty-percent AMI much more feasible. Finally, we, you can streamline this process by foregoing a request for proposal. Thank you for your leadership. By moving this important process forward, you'll be helping to create a much more vibrant downtown while also enabling the creation of safe and stable homes for your city's most vulnerable community members. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Carolyn Shepherd, followed by Alexa Leon Prado, and then Zachary A.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. My name is Carolyn Shepherd. I did submit a written comment this morning on behalf of Solutions for Supportive Homes in support of the downtown parking lot affordable housing proposal. We are a nonprofit organization made up of mostly parents who are supporting their adult children with mental health disabilities. Tonight, however, I'd like to offer my support for this project as a parent. My husband and I adopted a little boy from the San Mateo County Foster Adopt Program. Since my husband's passing in two thousand and seven, I have been raising and supporting my son by myself. He was born with fetal alcohol syndrome, which causes cognitive disabilities. My son has lived in a few apartment situations but returned to live at home these past two and a half years. While he has demonstrated some capacity to live independently, I have basically acted as his support service. Therefore, he will require a living situation with onsite support, such as services that are described in the Atlanta, excuse me, Alliant proposal in order to live successfully and be able to maintain his housing. So this affordable housing proposal that includes units for special needs represents hope for our adult children with disabilities. And I thank you for including this very urgent need in your affordable housing plans. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Alexa Leon Prado, followed by Zachary A., and then Sheri Zazowski.
Hi. Thank you. Oops. Hi. Thank you, council members. I'm Alexa Leon Prado from District Five. I, I believe in affordable housing, but I do not believe we should destroy our downtown to do it. I don't think you, you should support any of these RFPs. Your current process is already hurting our downtown as we don't fill empty storefronts and businesses leave during this upheaval. Please don't empty out the rest of downtown with continuation of this project. Please issue RFQs for other sites. Given many moved to Menlo Park because of the charming downtown, we should put this up for a vote. We didn't elect you to destroy our city. Let the voters decide. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker will be Zachary A., followed by Sheri Zazowski, and then M. Jackson.
Good evening, Menlo Park, Menlo Park City Council and Mayor Combs. My name is Zachary Inglemeyer. I am a former four-year resident up until, actually this past month, of the community of Woodside, your neighbor to the west, and a startup founder and a member of the Biomass Building Materials Collective, part of Mass Design Group. And first of all, I have to say that as a circular economy expert and someone that loves walking to things and such, the idea of having housing in the lovely Menlo Park downtown is a good one. It always has been. This particular project is at an interesting point because we actually have the opportunity now to stop the project before it is mishandled. And it is going to be mishandled if we continue on this path. However, we, we have an incredibly intelligent community of people that live in Menlo Park and the surrounding areas, as well as people who look from all across the country to this area for inspiration, who want to get involved, me included. We have the opportunity here to create what is truly a bellwether or a harbinger project for others to follow, but we're not doing that. So I propose that we put this to a vote to vote on the utilization of downtown, and I don't mean these three parking lots. I mean all public land in downtown, including the land that goes up against the transit line stop, to start from scratch and really create something that is truly innovative. I would love to get involved, yes, but I think more than anything else, we need to ref, to reflect the longtime and short and new residents of Menlo Park and really do create something interesting. And I have many ideas myself, come from a family of developers, and I think that this can be amazing. But as it sits, it must be denied on our constitutional principles of such things. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Sheri Zazlowski, followed by M. Jackson, and then David.
Mayor Combs and council members, I, I wish I could be there in person, but I'm sparing you all whatever germs I might have from whatever bug I caught. So you've heard from me and from many of us before, this project is the right thing in the wrong place. And because it is in the wrong place, it will do untold damage to our city. I know we have district elections now, and that helps people to get elected more easily. However, each of you is responsible for the entire city. Everything you do affects the entire city. And so the downtown is the responsibility of all of you, the protection of our downtown. When people in other cities say, let's go to Menlo Park, they don't mean Facebook. They mean the downtown. And without the parking lots that serve the residents, that serve the employees, that serve our businesses, we'll have almost no shopping district left. People aren't going to come here. And the people in affordable housing, they're not going to be able to waltz into Drager's and, and go to Left Bank and so forth. They're not going to be able to patronize our businesses. We are an upscale bedroom community. That's the reality. And we need to appreciate that reality and protect what we have and find better places for affordable housing. By the way, we have some already in our downtown. We have Crane Place, which was done beautifully, and it's what, two blocks from Santa Cruz Avenue. It can be done, but it has to be done intelligently and appropriately. And I want you to take this whole project off the table, City Council members. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be M. Jackson, followed by David.
Hello, I am Marie Jackson, and I live in the Allied Arts area and have for the last 20 some odd years. So good evening, council members. I'm going to start with the clothes, my clothes. Please let the voters decide who elected you, who many of us feel that you are not listening to us. The proposal to remove every downtown parking lot and a five-year construction project is more than just a land use decision and goes beyond parking. It feels like a decision being made to us and not with us. The plan as it stands threatens to further disrupt small businesses that hold our community together, makes downtown inaccessible to seniors, people with disabilities, and those who don't bike in. And it will stretch our residences, residents even further. New taxes from bond measures that you have already stated will be needed. Where is the plan to keep this truly affordable and for whom? There have been several articles of late where apartments that are part of fair market developments have sat empty. Construction costs are rising, the need for subsidies are rising, and the burden keeps shifting to the very people who are asking you to slow down and listen. This isn't about buildings. It's not about cars and parking. It is about the soul of Menlo Park. You want to be heard. We want to be part of the solution, but it can't come at the cost of the downtown we rely on and additional Menlo Park taxes, which obviously with a million-dollar surplus, aren't being used the way we need it to be used. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be David, followed by Moises Viera.
Hello, this is David. So the first red flag of this project was when you guys are a stone's throw away from one of the greatest institutions in the world with the brightest minds, and instead of tapping into a group of that is the biggest stakeholder in the Menlo Park community, you went to their biggest rivals and got a group of Al Berkeley students who have absolutely no connection to the Menlo Park community, would see, would nothing, would like nothing better than to see the Menlo Park community destroyed. And you went to them as the key experts on what the best project for our community was going to be. The next red flag is when you, for months now, I've been listening to these meetings, and all of the people who speak in, the, the few people that speak in support of this project are city planners and people connected to the nonprofits which are going to benefit from it. And the few people that are, that actually are going to, you know, want to take advantage of the affordable housing, they even admit that they just want affordable housing and, and that this project has some major flaws. And the third red flag is that you guys do not want to put this to vote because you know that this project in downtown will be the last on, last choice among a number of other choices that people have mentioned. And the only brilliant part of this project is that it is so bad, is that you have created a group of rallying Menlo Park residents who are now in huge support of affordable housing anywhere but here. And that is the one brilliant thing you guys have done, is, is there is a rallying cry for affordable housing, just not at this location. And if you guys have not understood that at this point in time, with this many meetings, with this many locals that have spoke up to you guys, then you guys should just name this project Hubris. Because you guys are not listening to the residents of this community. You're listening to a group of students from Berkeley who are not stakeholders and have no incentive to see Menlo Park flourish long-term.
Thank you.
Right, and our final speaker will be Moises Viera.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Moises Viera. I'm a field representative of Carpenter Junior Local 217, representing 16, 1500-plus members of Local 217 and representing 35,000-plus members of Northern California Carpenters. I want to echo the comments made by my colleagues. Labor, carpenter labor standards should be implemented on their request for proposals, and it's highly important for the following reasons. Because when we reach out to some developers that do not align themselves with responsible contractors, it's for the reason that projects don't pencil out. Really? What does that mean? Projects don't pencil out translate to the following. Let's keep these names in mind. Nosario, it's a gentleman working in one of the neighboring cities. Jose, a gentleman by, also by the name Jose, Fidel, Rafael, Marco, Jr. These are gentlemen who actually work in multifamily, high-density residential projects that are built by developers who do not align themselves with responsible contractors. These are gentlemen that are making $30 an hour, or just slightly over $30 an hour. And they expected to build the housing that we much need. And with those $30 an hour, they still have to drive to South San Jose, Manteca, or the valley somewhere. How are they supposed to support their families? And when they get hurt with these jobs with no benefits, they have to go to county facilities for that medical attention. We have to foot that bill. So it's essential that we require, that we implement, I'm sorry, carpenter labor standards in the request for proposals to protect those workers, to get a much better product on the much-needed housing that it's coming, that will be coming. Oh, and, and all those units, the singles, the couples, the families, they're taxpayers, and they're going to be visiting those shops. So those are my comments. Thank you for the time.
All right, and that brings us to our final speaker, which we have no further cards or hands. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Heron. So I'll, I'll bring it back to the dais for council questions and discussion. Much like last meeting, I will try to institute a process. We will see if my process is any more successful than it was in last meeting. I'd, I'd like to, um, in an effort to sort of time-box us, focus initially on questions that council has for staff. And hopefully, we get through those questions, all questions, and then, and then move on to council discussion. Obviously, there can be some bleed between the two, but, but, but my hope is to front in the questions and get all, all of those out of the way and, and then bring it to council discussion and hopefully some, some direction for staff. So that being said, is, is there a council member who wants to kick off questions for staff or has, maybe we don't have any questions for staff or anyone who has questions for staff? Councilmember Schmidt?
I, I've got one. I'm just curious, the comment that Edworno made around the parking study being ready. I was just curious about the latest timeline, when that will be ready and viewable for, for us in the public.
Right now, the, the timeline for that study is showing that we may have some initial information that we can share towards the end of this year. So somewhere around the December timeframe.
Is it possible to give a little bit more information about the December timeline and whether anything will be available earlier? And I guess, I'm not sure how to approach this, given the, what you said, ask questions now versus comments.
I'd say there would be some, it's not a hard and fast line.
It's, it seems to me that, and I'm sure others, that the parking information would be very valuable to the respondents. And so is there, do you see any way to be able to weave those together?
So thank you, thank you, Councilmember Nash. So we may be able to
I'll just, so the Public Works Director, her hand is raised online. Oh, okay, we're going to get to her. Please go, Ms. Chan.
Sure, thank you. I, I was just going to maybe start it off, and then I was going to potentially ask the Public Works Director, Azalea Mitch, to, to come online. So I think, as Mr. Smith mentioned, we are looking to potentially have a draft of the study at the end of this year. There will be some more immediate steps that are being taken, so parking counts and whatnot, and then potentially doing some initial public outreach in the fall timeframe, the September timeframe. So there will be some engagement prior to the release of the study. But perhaps Ms. Mitch will be able to explain a little bit more.
Hi, yes. Good evening, council members. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. We actually have expanded the scope of work for the Parking Demand Management Study and concluded taking supplemental readings. We'll be engaging, we're developing a survey and will be engaging with the community during the fall. And so the expectation is for the consultant to review and to have recommendations by the end of the year based on the, the updated scope of work and effort this fall.
So with all respect, could you provide us with some idea of how you see that, working with the an RFP, assuming that that's how we decide to proceed?
Um, yeah, well, we have been working on definitely listening to the community in terms of right-sizing the scope of work for the consultant to assess parking demand management. This is an assessment that looks at existing conditions and will also take into account future conditions so that we can best propose recommendations to manage parking supply in downtown. So we envision that happening in parallel with the, with the RFP. And we will have preliminary findings, but it is important for us to seek community input so that that informs the consultant's recommendations as well. And that will happen this fall. In terms of the release of the RFP, I believe that will be discussed as part of the, Director Chow has an update on potential dates for the release of the RFP based on the discussion tonight.
So along those lines, I have a question, maybe I miss this. The Parking Demand Management Study, like what's the ultimate aim or goal there? Because we, we've, in the RFQ, asked for, so one-for-one replacement parking. Right, so that, that's essentially our, our benchmark, that all of the current retail parking essentially be replaced. Are we looking for that study then to suggest that we can do something less than a one-for-one replacement? Are we be looking at lowering the number of replacement parking or, yeah, replacement of retail parking we be, be, be looking at?
No, we are not looking at lowering that number. We're looking at optimizing how parking supply is currently used. So in terms of placing time limits, looking at fees, charge, charging for parking and optimizing the use of the parking supply that we have, and also taking a look at future scenarios on growth and making recommend, recommendations on, on how to better optimize our parking management to make it more efficient as we look at future growth as well.
And, and just to make sure I understand, and so those recommendations would be targeted at, like, before these developments or, or, or after them? Like this, is this looking at doing anything before these developments are online, or is this all connected?
Yes, it's all connected. So the, the study looks at the existing conditions, which is right now. And so we will be, the, the consultant will recommend optimization strategies to better use our parking lots based on existing conditions and also make assessments on future conditions based on growth. Growth in terms of use, but not in terms of existing supply. So we're not looking at changing those numbers, but looking at how our parking plazas are used and optimizing their use.
Okay, so then, while I could see the value for the RFP, it is not, I mean, ultimately, since the number of replacement parking, I mean, we're expecting isn't changing, and it's just sort of like how you might, like, better, more efficiently optimize or utilize that parking. It, it, it seems as though it's, it's not like critical for an RFP that, 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 that parking analysis be, be complete. That's, that's my assessment. No one has to agree with me on that. But if you disagree, feel free. No.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, this isn't really meant to be just, sorry, I'm asking another question because this is all clarifying for me, too. I'm not really trying to make this into a discussion, but I think, so I want to kind of further understand, for the RFPs that we're considering, the baseline is one-to-one replacement. This is a sort of a, as the mayor is saying, an optimization that doesn't affect that number necessarily, even though the processes are interwoven, because there's other factors. I'm, I'm curious about, from an optimization point of view, we're not currently enforcing some of our parking laws downtown. And I know we, we have a bit of a lull until we do some hiring, so it's not a pointing of fingers thing, but that kind of factors in as well. So it's just a little confusing about the guidance we really want to give in this next round about just purely the number of spots that these, at a minimum, if they, you know, and, and then the related costs. So for clarity's purposes, and sorry, I'm usually a little more articulate than this, but for clarity's sake, they're interrelated, but the spot, the number of spots are the number of spots. And that shouldn't slow down our RFP process because this is about optimization, including enforcement. Is that, is that accurate, or is that a little too jumbled?
I would, I would clarify that I think the parking, the parking plazas right now have approximately 550 spaces, maybe a few more than that. And we asked for a minimum of 506. That was based on counts that were done, kind of at the peak occupancy. That was based on counts that were done, kind of at the peak occupancy. And so the number is set based on those counts that were done. And then, as Mitch was stating, and as you're stating correctly, the Parking Management Study is looking about how to most efficiently manage the number of spaces that we have overall, not increasing or decreasing, but making sure that people aren't circling, looking for parking endlessly, and that spaces are not sort of being held for extremely long periods of time overnight, those kinds of things.
So I guess, assuming that we do move forward with an RFP, I would like staff to flesh out a little bit more the number four parking strategy, and just make sure that we're in sync with what we're going to be getting from our own study, and providing as much information and clarity around that as possible to them. Thank you.
You know, so sticking with the replacement parking, I think my question to staff would be, you know, one of the applicants was sort of, you know, very clear that they didn't think that they could afford to replace the parking. And most of the other applicants seem not to have an issue with this, and so it was like, so whose math is right? Or whose math do we think is right? Because that's two vastly different conclusions. And I'll have to say, I do come with a bit of a bias, because early chatter and people I spoke to said that, like, oh, having to replace retail parking is gonna be a huge barrier, right? And you're gonna get a lot of applicants that are gonna say that, like, that just can't be done. And in this case, we only got one applicant that said that that just can't be done, or very clearly, others said it could be done, and then the one applicant that said it couldn't be done, were saying you can't move forward in the process. And so I want to make sure that we're not, and now I'm breaking my own process, where I'm doing lots of commenting and less questioning. I do want to make sure we're not in the scenario of dinging the applicant that told the truth, if at some point down the road, all of these other applicants are gonna come and say, oh, you know what, given current market conditions or economic conditions, we really can't replace that parking.
I think that's partially why we are recommending the RFP phase, is to, each of the, each of the submittals that we got, kind of outlined things a little bit differently, provided details a little bit differently, or didn't provide the same amount of details. And so the thought is, moving into the RFP, if that's what council directs, then we can request more specificity to get more details about the funding, the strategy to make the replacement parking happen. Certainly appreciate that one was straightforward, that based on what they saw and their expertise, they didn't believe it was possible. But for the other six, the majority of them, trying to get a little bit more detail and consistent detail across them, to then evaluate at that next stage, was our recommendation.
Other questions for staff? And Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have one follow-up question about the parking, and then a question regarding union labor, and that is, who is responsible if there is not enough parking? That's what my concern is. Would that be the city's responsibility, the developer's responsibility?
Could you clarify, do you mean public parking, or resident parking, or both, potentially?
Both, potentially.
So I think it would have to be a coordinated effort between the property manager, looking at, and working in coordination with the city on ensuring that the different, the Parking Management Plan that is ultimately developed as part of this, if there is shared parking, or if there are resident parking passes, or those kinds of things, depending on how that Parking Management Strategy ultimately gets fleshed out, then I think I could see potential for responsibility, some on the property management, especially around resident parking, and then some for city enforcement as well. And that would also probably tie into the Parking Management Study that's being discussed in terms of what the city can do to help make sure that there's efficiency in downtown parking for the public spaces as well.
Thank you. And in the study, is it possible to use the existing scenarios in Menlo Park, where there is not enough residential parking, provided?
Do you mean increasing the amount of, could you specify a little bit more around residential parking?
There's existing examples, whether it's in Menlo Park or neighboring cities, but to include that in the study? Because it's something that exists now, it's not a scenario that you have to create.
Then my, could you explain what you're, a little bit more about what you're talking about including in the study, please?
So in a few projects, affordable housing projects, enough parking was not provided, so it spills over into the neighborhoods. And there is a discussion at CCAG around what do you do about it, what existing problems we already have, and just thinking about legislation, because there's always lobbying for new legislation happening, and eliminating parking is not necessarily the solution.
I would just point out that we are, where this project is, will be located next to transit, is very different than many other locations in the city where I know there are issues with not having enough parking.
Yes, thank you. My next question is regarding the union labor, and will who we choose as a potential developer determine if we use union labor or livable wages? Or is that something that council can determine in the RFP?
That could be specified in the RFP. I think it also depends a little bit on some of the specifics around the development, funding sources, legislation, those kinds of things as well. But I think if there's a desire to include labor standards out front for everybody to be aware, then that could be added.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess because I have a little energy and it's fairly early, I want to ask this question more for the folks who are joining us midstream, but just to also dispel a little myth that the council's not listening to what residents want. So this is a question for anybody on staff. If we were to, all of a sudden, say, we don't want to proceed, we need to stop this, the residents are overwhelmingly telling us, no, this is not what we want, could you just remind us what the implications of a decision like that look like? Could you spell it out fairly clearly to everybody listening? If we made that decision, then what would happen next, and what are the repercussions of that?
I think there's various options that the city could pursue, there's not a singular path. We would likely start with a recommendation that the council reconsider some of the deadlines and time commitments in the Housing Element Program HG4, which is the program that contemplates development of downtown parking lots into affordable housing. And we would then look to HCD for those, to get approval, to make those modifications with respect to modifying the deadlines in Program HG4. And I think that would be likely the first step. The city would negotiate with HCD to make those modifications, and then continue on the path of pursuing other housing development projects.
I have more of a comment, as I had some of the same questions as others up here, but it's my understanding that Presidio Bay, who's the developer that did Springline, actually has some excess parking spots at Springline. So perhaps there are some creative solutions, for example, downtown employees who would need to park the full day, residents who have multiple cars. So I think to Council, or sorry, Vice Mayor Nash's point, I think a benefit of this site is that we might be able to get creative with some solutions. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I just, like, just creative with solutions of less parking, or?
No, I completely understand the need for parking. I think that's just the reality. People need, yeah, if they want to come support businesses, we need parking, we need parking for the residents. But I guess what I mean is, I think we are, have the benefit of, within walking distance, having excess parking available to us, again, for folks who need to park the full day, or things such as that.
And so I do want to, to some degree, beg the question a little bit. The Councilmember Schmidt asked staff to sketch out a world in which the council said, no, it didn't want to proceed, and the city attorney said there was options, and here's what kind of one path would look like. And so I'd go back to the city attorney that, like, if, and this is a bunch of this, but if this issue, to some degree, went to voters, and ultimately, voters decided that they want to put a prohibition, a requirement on the downtown, and some sort of reutilization of the downtown parking lots, that same scenario you sketched out would be the scenario we'd have to go down, right? To some degree.
Probably. To the extent you're referring to Notice and Ten to Circulate a Petition, which we understand is currently being circulated in the city, for which I submitted a ballot title in summary recently, that initiative wouldn't actually preclude the implementation of Program HG4, but it would require that a subsequent vote of the Menlo Park voters, after any action taken to pursue Program HG4 is approved by the city. So we would also, as you said, Mayor, need to work with HCD to ensure that HCD doesn't believe that that's an impediment to the city realizing Program HG4.
If there are no other, like, sort of questions for staff, I can bring it to the dais for a discussion, and obviously, if, in the discussion, there is additional questions for staff, obviously, we can go. Again, and I wanted to approach this as the staff has outlined it, as at least a providing direction. And so I think the first overall arching direction is whether to pursue the RFP process from this point. So then, from, depending on how that decision goes, and we can get into additional details, but, so, not to directly put anyone on the spot, but I appreciate if all council members could chime in to some degree on whether they are supportive of not of giving direction here to, in a general sense, pursue the RFP process. So whoever wants to go first, go first. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So you're just looking for, yes, I'm interested in moving forward, and no, I'm not?
Yeah, you can say more than yes or no, but that's, having a yes or no as part of that will be very key and important.
Okay, thank you. I'm interested in moving forward with the RFP.
Yeah, I'll go down the line. Councilmember Schmidt.
Okay, go ahead.
I am interested in moving forward. I am also interested in moving forward.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schmidt, not much time to think.
I want to, I appreciate the timeline response earlier. I think I was maybe fishing for more of the harder repercussions if we don't meet the requirements of the housing element. And given that this is a core part of the housing element, that many members of the group here negotiated before, we're committed to that. And there are serious repercussions for us not fulfilling that commitment. So I'll be totally honest, I feel locked in. I feel like we're locked in until we make a radically different decision, and that's pretty fraught as well. Just saying magically we need to look at the Civic Center, or find somewhere else, I mean, I think people have heard me say this before, just making that statement doesn't make it so, doesn't magically make land appear. So I'm supportive to proceed, because it doesn't feel like we, there's repercussions for kind of tinkering with what's come to date in the housing element, and I'm nervous about starting to try to make adjustments, and then we miss the numbers, and then we end up like Saratoga with 22 Builders Remedy projects. So, yeah, that was my, that was why I was kind of processing, is I don't want to arbitrarily go in and create a worse problem, because the housing element is a bit outside of our control at this point. So proceed, but with concerns.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Schmidt. And so where I stand is, I actually would be supportive of a pause at this moment. I think that there are, you know, a lot of swirling dependencies at play that are outside of the council's control, or maybe outside of the council's control. And so, given that, I do think an appropriate approach would be to pause and see how some of those things play out. Now, I think to the city attorney's point, it wouldn't require some engagement with HCD, because some deadlines would likely not be met, some, what I will point out, incredibly aggressive deadlines from the very beginning, which probably won't be met even now, under the best of circumstances. So that discussion about deadlines may need to be had, no matter what. But I do think that, like, a pause doesn't say that this isn't something ultimately that the council or the city is supportive or interested in pursuing, or interested in seeing happening. But I think it does respond to the moment that we are in, and that there is, there is lots of concerns about impacts, specifically as it relates to construction. And and as I said, I I would like to see um some of the dependencies, some of the issues and factors surrounding uh this issue play out a little bit before I would want to sort of go to the next step or or look at the next step of of issuing uh an R an RFP. And so again, that's a lot to say for um someone who is for one on an issue, but but that that is um that is where I'm at, Vice Mayor.
So I'm, um, thank you, and I'm curious what a pause would mean. How you, what would, what do you see a pause would mean? And what do you think the timeline would be and what would you gain? When would you start it again?
Yeah, so there are circumstances which may, and again, I know that there are lots of this, may force a pause on us to some degree. Um, to me, the the pause uh would be not moving forward tonight and or not giving direction to issue uh or to start down the RFP process. So to me, and and then to um provide some time to see like how some of these other um actions happening around this issue will will play out. And so I couldn't give you a very specific timeline, but it is not two years. Like, right, it is, it is more, I I think in the line of months to see how some things play out.
Could you, I'm, I I still am trying to um understand better what you are talking about. What are the issues and what do you think will actually give us more clarity on those?
Well, well, one is a possible um, you you know, ballot measure. So I I don't want to talk in detail because again, that is not certain and um it's not certain that will play through. And so, but but that is, that is certainly one. To answer your question.
And just to maybe add on to this part of the discussion, I I think I'm, I'm a lot less concerned about that. I think it's a very natural reaction when people disagree. So I'm not as worried about lawsuit and the ballot issue. It's uh, the reason I probably didn't go as far as saying let's push the pause button is I agree with the Vice Mayor is I'm just not quite sure what that gets us. Maybe that gets us more clarity, more time to get clarity from HCD. But we might still get the same answer of you're committed, you're locked in. So I, it's a, it's a fuzziness in the repercussions of trying to change something that's already submitted and approved by HCD that's giving me um uh concerns, you know, and I I'm actually fairly neutral on community center versus downtown versus whatever. I I just want to make sure we don't get penalized for not meeting our housing element. So the location is less important to me than we've got a commitment for units and we we don't have much land. And and so I just, I'm a little unclear what a pause would give us relative to the housing element process and if that's even worthwhile. Um, because we may end up in exactly the same spot after multiple consultations with HCD. So so I'm still in favor of kind of moving forward with the process for RFP because I don't think it really commits us to anything still at this point. It it moves us a step forward, but in parallel, I would, I would love to just get more clarity. If if at some point we did decide to stop this process, what's it going to mean for us as a city relative to the state? That's, and you don't have to answer that um to attorney, um, but that's, that's really where my my head is at this point.
And I would just say, and again, I very much respect your uh position as as well as the position of of everyone else on council. But it is not as if like sort of a pause then um immediately results in a very clear set of circumstances like, right? It's a pause or, you know, again, and this is a pause, it's going to have some impact on um very key deliverables that that we've we've outlined. Um, but then it it becomes a pause and choose your adventure, like, right? You you've got, you've you've got options. And so like, and each of those options have their own like sort of benefits and repercussions. And that that would be for the council to uh to decide. But I I do think that while we talk a lot about like, you you know, H HCD, um, I I do think it is like also a moment of being responsive to residents. Um, and and that has like real value. Um, I will say, as I I've said, like, almost every major development issue in recent Menlo Park history has been the subject of a voter initiated measure. And again, the legality of of this possible measure has not been set and I'm not saying that it's it's happening. But it is, if I'm looking at history, history tells me that it is very likely that this development issue will also be decided by voters as was the, you know, ultimately the downtown specific plan and the developments along El Camino. As as was the uh uh some years ago, the ultimately the Bohannon developments on on the Bay side of town. I wasn't here, but my understanding was the subject of 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 a ballot measure. And as was most recently, the affordable uh housing proposal in my district on the former Flood School site. They all ultimately were ballot measures. And so to some degree, this is the way we resolve these issues in Menlo Park. Again, it could be different now. And I will say another issue is that like, in all of those circumstances that I, the three that I listed out, that went to voters, the voters ultimately chose what you might consider the pro-development side. Again, not clear that this is 100% going to go to the ballot, not clear where Menlo Park voters are going to be. But uh to me, those all factor into like how I'm looking at this at the moment. But again, I respect that this is, you know, a scenario where we can, you know, disagree. Um, but that said, I don't want to spend too much time on this issue. It is clear that there is council support to issue the RFP. So now let's get into um the nuts and bolts of what the council wants to give direction in connection with how that RFP would look like. So uh, the next issue was identify developer teams to receive RFP. The staff whittled it down from the initial list of those who responded to the RFQ to four. Um, I I think, you know, so then I would open up to the council, is there, uh, Councilmember Wise?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. So uh, given that with affordable housing developments, there are sort of, in terms of the property management, there's sort of extra steps that need to be taken. You know, income levels need to be verified, all of that. When is the appropriate time to ask the developers about the property management aspect of this if the housing is to be built? Would it be during the RFP or?
Yeah, I I think an appropriate um category to ask about is the details about a property management plan and their uh approach to that. And certainly like i- if that is something that the council is interested in, we would add that to the RFP.
I would certainly appreciate that being added. Yes, thank you.
Um, so I I think my question to council would be, is there alignment in the staff's decision to um reduce those who would submit the RFP from uh the RFQ? I I'm I'm assuming there is all alignment that the RFP applicants would be limited to those people who are those organizations who submitted RFQs. So I'm assuming that if someone wants to challenge that, then that's totally fine. But if that's established, then uh is there alignment with staff's direction or suggestion, recommendation to reduce the number um of of applicants uh that we would request to submit for the RFP? Or or does, does staff want to, or does the council want to see um, want to op- open that up?
So I would um stay with what the council, I mean, sorry, what staff recommended. With the one caveat, I'm interested in hearing from other, from my colleagues about Eden because I am uncomfortable with the fact that, yes, they um were very um forthright in what they were doing. And I don't um, I don't want them penalized for that. On the other hand, I think that it, from what the RFQ reads like, um, the responses, and I guess maybe I'm looking to staff a little bit, it sounds like there is some good options out there. And so perhaps Eden um did not present anything like that and um shouldn't, you know, we draw the line at the four.
Would you like me to comment on that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so when the RFQ was issued, there were the the minimum requirements, the 345 units and the replacement parking. And Eden certainly has the qualifications. If you look at their developments that they've uh done, the the qualifications of the professionals on their staff. Um, but in their proposal, they listed 344 units, so one short of of the requirement. And um they, as you said, were forthright about the inability to provide the parking. And so when staff did the evaluation, we sort of tried to keep it cleanly about who who were the most responsive uh development teams. And um certainly, again, Eden had great qualifications, but they didn't check those two key boxes that we were looking for.
I actually um very much appreciate it. And now that you're mentioning um that they also just had suggested the 32 surface spaces. So even if we're not looking at the parking for um replacement public parking, they are certainly um far short on the surface spaces. So I would um suggest we go ahead with the four that is outlined by staff.
Yeah, I I'm I'm torn on this one a little bit for exactly the reason the Vice Mayor said. But I I was really struck by a comment that the mayor made of, so, you know, the process plays out and then all of a sudden what was, what got everybody down selected and then selected magically can't appear for various reasons. So this isn't a comment on any of the developers individually. I I'm just curious from staff of, how do we protect against that? I mean, what's the, what's the future proofing step to? Because I think there's a little unease that that might actually happen that way. So what's the future proofing step to avoid that happening?
I believe that in the RFQ, there was a statement that a development team should not presume any additional city funding um beyond the the lease that would be provided for the land. And so I think in the RFP, um, since we are spelling out more details that we want to see from the development teams, we can also be um more clear about the city's ability um and and what we expect from development teams that respond in terms of their provision of the replacement parking. Um, and so we would make sure that that is quite spelled out so that they're not spending time on a scenario um that ultimately can't be done and we're not spending time reviewing and and discussing it.
Thanks.
If it's appropriate, I would like to see in the RFP that they actually spell out what do they believe the city's responsibility will be? What do they believe their responsibility will be? So it's very clear cut when we're looking at the RFQ's responses. And we can actually make comparisons across the board, hopefully, um, very realistically, very practically.
I have a question about, not sure if this would be in the RFP, but I'm actually interested in seeing an affordable housing developer and a private developer partner with the city. Because there are some aspects of each RFQ that I think um is needed in the city. And I don't think that one developer can provide all of them. So I'm not sure what that would look like. And that's the first. Um, and then the second part is, I'm not sure if we're going through line by line on the RF P to see if there's things we want to add.
The next thing was to go to the to the outline, is that what you're referring? So, yeah, um, once we uh, well, I just wanted to make sure like, right, was, do we want to reduce the developers or align with staff's recommendation or do something different? And then then we'll go to the outline.
Thank you, and I am in support of the staff recommendation to use the current RFQs.
Any of the RFQs or just the four that they said that they think should go forward?
I'm thinking the RFQs because there's one I'm considering that's not on the list.
Okay. So uh, just to be clear, Councilmember Taylor would be interested in providing the option to everyone who submitted an RFQ, the ability to submit an RFP, right?
Yes, unless I can just add the one that's not.
Or maybe one, just do you, do you want to name the one that you, that that wasn't on the list that you'd like to see?
It's Alta.
Alta, okay. With it. Yeah, Eden was it? Because taking uh, yeah.
They, they're actually partnering with related companies, um, which is one of the recommended RF uh Q respondents.
So I think if we were, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, adding anyone, we would be adding Path Ventures, right, and Pacific Companies, like, right? And Eden, yeah, yeah. Those, so if, yeah, if we wanted to add anyone back, it would be, it would be one of those.
I'd like to add Path.
Okay. Councilmember Wise.
Um, I would be in support of the four that staff selected as well as Eden. Um, I I don't know if it's possible, but I do really like Councilmember Taylor's comment about the possibility of multiple developers, private developers working with the city. Again, don't know if it's possible, but if it is, it would be interesting to hear about.
I'm interested in staff's um response to possibly having multiple developers and how that would work with this process. Realizing you have not been asked this ahead of time.
Thank you for the the question. So I I think with the RFPs, the city council has the um ability to mix and match if they choose to do so. I think we can also, if the, it's the will of the council, to say like, assemble your, assemble your development team and that may include a mixture of nonprofit and and for-profit developers. Um, I would say that uh those who did respond and those who would want to advance to the RFP stage would have to be sort of the prime, if you will, and then they can assemble their team to to meet the different needs of a particular project.
So I would have a question of like, you know, now if you're picking partners, like, right? Do you have to pick a partner that is among this RFQ grouping? Or can I go and pick a partner that, do I hold the spot and I can bring anyone in to the party I want to, or has, is it someone who was already at the party? Um, that has to be, that has to be my partner.
We'll look for the council for direction, but I think it could be, I, you know, someone who is on the RFQ list, the four, the seven that we've identified would be the primary respondent to the RFQ and could go out and pick uh folks who are not on the RFQ list.
So I would go back to going with the four respondents that um staff originally said. Alliant Communities, Mid Penn Housing, Presidio Bay Ventures and Related Companies, which is also with Alta. And um having them um somehow wrapping into the RFP the fact that we are interested in partnerships if they feel like that would be. if they feel like that would be a more robust project. And I would do that both with Path and with Eden. Leave them off the list, but basically say that we were interested in Path and what they bring and also in Eden. But let's stick with the four proposals. And then with that direction, that just bring us your, bring us, bring us your best proposal with whatever partners that entails.
I just want to, like, be clear what we've seen. So though, there's only one, like, for-profit developer on the list that doesn't have, at this moment, a, an affordable housing partner, right? And so it would only be saying that, like, Presidio Bay, go and find an affordable housing developer to partner with. Because again, if you're contracting the list to the four, like, right, like, I mean, you know, Mid Penn's not going to go, or unless you're telling Mid Penn, then to, you go mid, I guess it can work the other way, right? You're essentially telling Mid Penn that you should also look in bringing in a, a market rate developer into your proposal?
No, I think, the way I would see it is, bring us your strongest proposal, however you envision that, whether it is partnering with one of the other groups, partnering, very honestly, with someone who's not on the list. Just bring us your, your best proposal. And I would tend to not bring in Path because they really did not respond to our RFQ. And to me, that's something I certainly would have them as a partner to one of the other organizations if they feel like that's worthwhile. But I would hold to the, to the requirements that we put together for the RFQ.
Okay, so I want to just, like, kind of run, make sure we run this down because the Vice Mayor is at the four recommended. Councilmember Weiss suggested adding Eden, did you not? Or someone?
Yes, I would be happy to add Eden back in, but I also do agree with the Vice Mayor. I would be comfortable moving forward with the four and then encouraging them to bring in others as they see fit.
Okay, so complicating my math, I don't know where to, where to put you. But then, and Councilmember Taylor was interested in adding Path back. Okay, and then Councilmembers, I'm, since, I can chime in here, but ultimately I did recommend that we pause and so, I'm a little hesitant to, yeah, okay.
I have to confess, I'm kind of neutral. I can see both sides. I hate to do that, but I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, so.
Yeah.
So part, part of my opinion comes from visiting sites by Eden, by Mid Penn Housing. I have not visited a site with Path. They are one, I believe, that has gone down to 15% AMI, so just thinking about the target audience as well. So I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation as far as how do we have a development team that can address, for me, the concern is the 15 to 80% AMI. I'm not concerned about 120 because we have existing vacancy rates that addresses their needs.
I mean, my thing here is I'm inclined to go with staff's recommendation of, of the four. I mean, yeah, in thinking of, like, one, yeah, on the, yeah, but on the organization side, I know, I mean, responding to the RFQ was a lot of time and effort. And then obviously responding to, responding to an RFP is, is, is a lot of time and effort. And I think the four ultimately were the four who had the best, the strongest track record in the Bay Area, in some cases specifically in Menlo Park. And, and so for me, I think it would be, I do, would have concerns that broadening to the full RFQ list or sort of randomly adding additional applicants would ultimately not be the best use of those applicants' time. And again, they could make a decision not to apply, but staff's time and our own time. And so, and so that's how I, I think I would, I would approach that. And so, Councilmember Schmidt?
So maybe you, you did trigger, while I'm famously not neutral on many things, this one I am, but I actually would flip that around and say, I'm a little inclined to go with where Councilmember Taylor is because that's a $30,000 to $40,000 investment by the developer. So if they feel like maybe they didn't present themselves exactly as they wanted and their willingness to take another bite at the apple, that's, that's more a commitment of, for them, 30 to 40K is probably the average of what it costs. So I think I'd be inclined to, if someone like Path wanted to take another bite, knowing the amount of investment they would have to make in that, I'd be inclined to be more on this side of the table for, for that issue.
Okay, so, um, my only thing is, like, I very much didn't want to be in the position of me, my vote deciding or my direction deciding how we would proceed here. Again, like I said, because, which is essentially where we're at.
Could staff give an opinion about how much, what a difference is from a staff perspective to have four versus five, if there is a difference?
Are you asking in terms of, like, amount of time needed to review or having additional options or all of that, just over?
I was thinking in terms of having time to review, processing, working with the teams, and I guess also just as far as, you have the experience as far as when council then makes a decision. Have you seen value in having a broader base or any insights you can give?
I think from staff's perspective, having more viable options that potentially meet the city council's interests and respond to the community is a better thing. And it's a, if we're already looking at four, adding one more is, is a small increase in the, the time and the amount of work that would go into the review.
I think my only question is, like, if you're adding Path, why not add Eden? Again, but I, like, but I do, I do want to move on to the outline, so I, where, where is the direction at to staff?
Maybe we'll get there after the RFP, when we go through the outline.
No, let's get there now.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation. Mr. Smith, you stated that the council's interests is what you would be looking for. And my interest is to serve that 15% to 80% AMI. And I think that what Path does is essential to getting to that number. So at any rate, which is why I'm willing to advocate for it. However, if you make a recommendation that fits where the direction I want to go in, I'd be comfortable hearing it.
I think ultimately, there, there certainly isn't any, anything, like I said, from staff's perspective, review of an additional submittal to the RFP would not be an extensive additional amount of time for us. And it's an invitation to the developers. Well, if we extend that invitation to four or five teams, it's not necessarily guaranteed that all of them will respond. And so that's another consideration in terms of having multiple options to review and evaluate, I think is, is potentially a great thing.
Thank you.
Well, and that's, and that's why I was kind of putting it back and saying, let the developers opt in. I mean, if Eden wants to take another bite at the apple and spend that money, and staff is saying it doesn't really add much labor and time, then I don't think there's any harm in doing that. Anyway, one reporter's opinion.
So I'm going to take a stab at, like, the direction would be to both add Eden and Path as applicants that the city would be open to receiving, or they would request respond to an RFP, or who would receive the RFP. And so, I think that's, does the city attorney, city manager want to say, okay? I think that's what I'm going to go with, unless someone tells me I can't. Mr. Smith?
If I may, is there still the interest in expanding so that they could work with other developers on or off the list and combine resources? Okay.
Yeah, I think that that was the direction of council. So, so they have a seat at the party, like, right, and so they can bring someone in who's not currently at, at the party, both of them. So, which then could give a second application so they choose, choose with that path, maybe, or a greater likelihood of some success. Vice Mayor?
I guess, I would say they can only put one application in, so if they partner with someone else, that they can't play it both ways. And...
What do you mean, like, so, like, they can't play it both ways?
So what if, what if one of the organizations wants to collaborate with someone else and put their own application in?
No.
Or collaborate with a couple?
Yeah.
That's, I'm just saying, they should, everybody should partner up if they're going to, and then put it in. And I would, I would be supportive of that as well, of including more of the RFQ respondents, as long as they realize that we are trying to focus and that some, we were concerned that some of the respondents did not adequately answer the questions. So they, they need to think hard and really come up with some, a strong proposal if they are going to go forward.
Yeah, I, you know, my, my assumption is that, like, someone is, from those organizations is watching. And so, and I think this is a strong signal for them to, like, make a determination of, like, what, what a more successful application might look like to the RFP. So, okay, with that, we'll move on to the provide feedback on proposed RFP outline. And so I have those, oh, where is that at? I have them somewhere. Okay, so, development vision, housing program, parking strategy, financial proposal, implementation plan, community benefits and engagement, management and service plan, team, team and experience, legal structure and terms. Again, I think, right, this, you would be looking for kind of broad strokes as far as direction and not like...
Correct, yeah. We will bring back a document that then could be more minutely modified, but for now, any high level things that you'd like to see?
Yeah, okay. So across those categories are something, not in that category, is there anything a council member wants to highlight to, to staff? Yeah, we're, I guess I should start with you, Councilmember, because you...
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Combs. And for the housing program, I already stated the AMI I'm interested in. On number eight for management and service plan, if we can add ongoing community relations and then also lease up. And I'm not sure where the labor, where that would, where that would be under, or would we be adding a bullet, or I'm not sure where that would go.
Potentially under seven local partnerships for services, construction operations. But that's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's just go down.
Yeah, so I think I'll go kind of quick and fast with this. So I actually have one concern and five suggestions, but I'll, I'll go quick. In, in looking at this, I, I want to reference back the 30 to 40K that a developer will spend to go to the next round. And I'm a little concerned that we're still, it feels like we're still fishing for ideas. And I guess I would maybe ask in the next round from city staff, based on what's required in the housing element, across all the parts of the housing element, if we can add a level of specificity and requirements versus them telling us what they can do and trying to create a vision for us, I would hope that what comes back in the next round is a little bit more of our specific vision for what we want this to be. Things like parking, you know, being very explicit on things like parking and other experiences like that. So that's my concern is, is we're still fishing for, we're asking the developers to invest in creating our vision, and I, I hope we can flip that script a little bit. Not, not idea generation, but much more about what we're asking them. The, the question or sort of the points I wanted to make were, I want to reference the resident experience and the memo that Menlo Together sent, which I think was very thoughtful. So I would like to see a section, maybe integrated into section eight, asking a few questions about what's the resident experience going to be like? Because the affordable housing programs and projects that I've seen, that's Kikuk Crossing and other places, have that sort of as part of their whole appeal. So I'd like to see that teased out a little bit more, potentially in section eight or whatever you guys recommend. I want to take Councilmember Taylor's point a little bit further around workforce and labor standards. I'd actually like to see a separate section on that. So to be super clear, the four items in Bart's memo, sorry, the building and construction trades, and then we had a member, a number of members from the carpenters union here tonight expressing this. But I feel like at least four things from Bart's memo are around the requirement to pay prevailing wage and healthcare, the skilled and trained workforce, because that really is important, local hiring and employment of apprentices. And then also just a confirmation that each of these developers are having ongoing discussions with labor and the people who represent our workforce. And I'll be clear, like, I think this is important to have as its own section because it sends a signal, this is not a community benefit, it's an expression of our community values. And I, I feel like that's not emphasized, and, oh, are you, you know, it's not emphasized enough. Are you using union labor? We are, check. Like, that doesn't give us the level of specificity that I really feel pretty strongly about. So I just want to send a signal that, you know, Councilmember Taylor says this a lot about, we support our residents by hiring them, and a lot of these members of these, this workforce is here in Menlo Park. So I appreciate that she always holds us accountable for remembering that, and I, I want to memorialize that with its own section in, in the RFP. The other ones are a little quicker. The financial impact on the businesses, I can't remember who said that, one of the audience members, but I'd be interested in seeing if that's potentially part or possible of being part of an RFP. I'll be honest, I don't know what that looks like, but maybe just if staff could explore, is that, is that a possibility? If that's too far of a bridge, I'm okay with that, but I, I just responded to that comment by an audience member. Parking one-to-one replacement, I think more direct guidance on the parking feels like one of the most important things that we can do. And it's one of the more fraught parts of this whole thing. So I would, I kind of was under the impression that the parking study would inform that, but knowing that it's not really going to, I think we have to be more specific about what our true requirements really are. And then the last thing I would say, also responding to, I think it was Richard Dregger that said this, I don't want to see just construction phasing in here called out, but what's the construction mitigation plan? What's the true, because I think that's another very big concern residents are saying is, they're, they're not worried that the construction's going to get phased, they're worried about the ultimate impact. So just getting more information about what the true mitigation's going to be. So I know that was kind of rapid fire for five things and happy to follow up after with more details, but that's what's on my mind. Thanks.
So I have a slightly different perspective on a couple of these comments. I would like to see information about, for example, the building and construction trade, the four items that are requested language, but not as a requirement, but just as a response. I don't want to, and certainly, as has been said, I'm sure that the different organizations are watching this and under... I don't want to, and certainly as has been said, I'm sure that the different organizations are watching this and understand how we feel about labor and all. But I don't want to limit this. I want them to respond to the question so we know what we're getting, but leave it open to what, what are they providing? Same with the, where did I put my other notes? On the parking, I thought that staff had a robust parking strategy. And to the extent that we have, so I wouldn't change it that much. I would just request that as we get information from the parking study, parking management study, that as possible, we feed that to the applicants so that they have as much information ongoing as possible. But I, I would not require a one-to-one at this point. I would require finding out how they plan to, to address that. And I guess along that line, I, I would not put financial impact on the businesses. I think if anything, that's a city responsibility, not part of an RFP. And same as with the construction impact. I think all of these are good questions, but I don't think it's reasonable to put it on the respondents. And I would leave it a little bit more open, having, realizing that they are listening to us and that these are concerns as to how they will, just how do they respond? And then I, two other pieces that I would add is, I thought there was a very good comment early on from one of our public speakers saying, can we actually visit some sites? And I guess Councilmember Taylor was also saying that that's very, very important. I know I've visited several sites and have always been very impressed with what I've seen. But I think as we're trying to make a decision, that will really help to actually get a visual of what, what have they, what have they done? And to, so something there and also available, if possible, for some of the residents. I don't know how we exactly, we would do that, but just to, if there's possibly something for the community, but certainly for council members as we're making these decisions. And then I would also like, just to be clear, that there is Menlo Park preference of living and working in Menlo Park as we have. But just make it very clear within the RFP. And I think that is it. Thank you. So a lot of my thoughts have already been addressed, so to not be repetitive. Thank you for including under other items, the interviews, community, open house, public events. It would be super helpful just to highlight that and to maybe give examples or have the respondents give examples of the projects that they've done in the past. Particularly around the public engagement that they've done, how they did it, how it went. Just because now having been engaged with projects being developed in Menlo Park, affordable or otherwise, I've seen it go really well and not as well. So it would just be super helpful, especially given the public interest around this. So thank you.
And, you know, again, even though I didn't, so moving on to RFP, I will nonetheless provide some just general feedback on, on some of the things that will be top of mind for me. And thinking about RFPs, one, architectural styles, it's like, you know, downtown doesn't have one sadly. And these buildings, should they be built, will, you know, be like a key part of, of like how downtown looks. And, you know, again, maybe sets the table for how downtown will look or evolve going after that point. Because, because a number of those buildings, obviously, at some point in time will, will be reaching the end of their useful life. And so, so that, that's something that, that is, is, is important to me. I would be sensitive of heights, massing, great, is also, again, I know that we've given a number in terms of the units we're looking for. And it's not a low one, but, but I, I still have some sensitivity to that and that it is something that, that can fit well into, into downtown. Again, I'm very much a proponent of the idea of like mixed incomes, maybe in some market rate component to, to the housing units here. And maybe even different housing types to some degree, the extent to which it may make sense. I know for some apartment buildings or multi-unit buildings, it's like, they actually sort of have things like almost sort of townhouse floor pans on the, on the first floor. And so like, and you see that there are like doors on the street and little steps. And I, I think that that type of approach, like, right, can add that you're not building or constructing these sort of monolith buildings that can only be entered by one door. But that, that we are giving some priority to the idea of like neighbors being able to like sort of, or people, residents living in there being able to like quickly access like downtown for at least some of them. Great. And so again, that, that's something that will be top of mind for me. Of course, parking, 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 that is going to be key because I, I do think that, you know, I, I know that there are debate back and forth, which I don't want to wade into about like how utilized the parking plazas are or how busy they are or how like people drive around for hours trying to find parking spots. But they are utilized, especially during key times, like, right? And so, and I, I do think that like we, we should be mindful of that. And to some degree also utilize as community space. I was at the, what is it called Cars and Coffee this, this weekend, which is like the first Sunday of every, of every, of every month. And, and it's a, you know, a really nice like event. That being said, I, I, it also would be great, I'm not necessarily looking for stuff like kind of like necessarily like retail in these developments. Because I don't necessarily want something to compete with downtown businesses. But, you know, there isn't like a community room anywhere downtown, at least that I'm aware of. And so something like that, a community room that could be used by the cities, other organizations to have like community events. Like downtown, I think would be something that would be really, really cool. So, and then overall, it is like I, I am sensitive to this idea of like the construction impacts, like, right? And, and, and again, how, how those get mitigated, remediated in some way, I'm not sure. But just to make sure that we don't lose businesses through this process. Or do we do all that we can? And maybe it's not, to the vice mayor's point, maybe that's more a city thing than the developer. And I'm all game for that. I'm just sort of putting this out there as something that like I, I think that is, that is important to me. That's my, my feedback. And if we did not have any other feedback, the vice mayor?
Thank you. You just triggered one more thought. And that's, at some point, I think this is a city responsibility. I'd love to see more about circulation and just traffic management.
And then I, I had a, so I, with the vice mayor responding to some of the suggestions I brought up, I, I think I'm an 80% agreement with where that, where that landed. You know, if, if resident experience from Menlo Together is more a set of questions we ask, I'm cool with that and not making it a requirement. Financial impact on businesses, I'm cool with that. And also construction mitigation, I, I agree with the mayor that like it's an important point to tease out, but who, where that lives is less important than we just, somebody firmly addresses it. Because I hear that a lot in clear. The 20% I, I don't think I agree with, and I just wanted to clarify with staff is what, what does open mean? So when I look at this list for the RF, for the RP, what, what's truly a requirement versus an open asking of a question? Because to me, the point I'm sticking on is labor. I, I have a pretty visceral reaction when we classify that as a community benefit. And I, I feel pretty strongly it needs to be a separate section. I, I think I want to be a little convinced that it should be an open kind of friendly type thing. I, I would rather it be somewhat required that they engage with labor and don't shut them out. And this is less about this project, it's more about a habit I see from developers all over the Bay Area. So what's the difference between in the, in this exercise, making something open just to get the response to a question versus a requirement?
I think up at, up at the front of the, the RFP outline, it talks about, there's information that we intend to provide out. And that was going to some of the details that were being mentioned about specific parking, specific unit counts, getting the city's sort of expectations, vision for what would be developed. In terms of where to fit in labor standards, practices, I mean, I, I could see it either way. I could see it as its own separate section and providing sort of the open question of describe your labor practices, workforce, you know, participation. And, and leaving it to the applicant to respond to that and tell us. But I, I think it would be helpful if council feels strongly that that should be a commitment as part of sort of like under units, under parking, under some of those things that we absolutely need. We could indicate that as a commitment. And I think it's, it's helpful to the development teams upfront to know if there are certain things that are absolute musts versus things that we're looking for their feedback. But we may think about as a consideration among a number of other factors.
Yeah, I, I think part of the reason why I'm sticking on this one and feeling a little visceral about it is, is, you know, I, I've been, you know, observing council now for quite a while. And, you know, Councilmember Taylor consistently says like, we support our residents by hiring them. Or what are we doing to hire, you know, our local folks and they know best and all that kind of thing. And they should benefit and our community should benefit. So I, I think the reason why I'm feeling strongly is, is it feels like maybe another missed opportunity for us to really express a community value. That we want to, we want labor from local, from, from local families. We want to train apprentices, like the things in, in the building trades outline feel very purposeful and as, as an expression of what we value as a community. So leaving it open just to gauge responses and then ultimately it's, it could be another instance of, you know, missed opportunity. That's why I'm feeling, it, it doesn't feel like we lose anything by requiring at least an engagement with labor that we can evaluate more directly. And then opting out of working with the developer who doesn't do that, you know? So that's, it feels like a missed opportunity if we don't call it out specifically and make yet another attempt to kind of hire from our local workforce that's here and pays taxes and does all the, the things that they need to do. It feels like a very reasonable request as opposed to just some kind of a response to a question we want. So that's why I'm kind of feeling that way.
Through the mayor?
If the council is open to this suggestion, I do think the council should provide staff direction on what aspects of the project the council intends to require union involvement. There's very different, obviously, there are different unions and labor needs for different parts of the project. There's mechanical engineers, framing, construction, plumbing, unions. And so is there an intent to require union labor for each of those types of work? Or is there a more limited or general desire? I think staff needs that direction to properly address these things in the RFP.
I guess I would ask the specific questions and get an answer as opposed to requiring it. So then we can evaluate it. People have heard in our discussion tonight that we value it. But to actually require it, I'm concerned that we may, it may limit our options. And I want to understand what the range is. I hope that people do follow that, but I don't want to see, I would like to be able to, that's not the only thing I want to evaluate a project on. And so actually listing like the four options in the requested language from, again, the building and construction trades, email would be fine or some other decision or some other approach that staff thinks is, gets us to the same place and is. But not requiring it, but certainly asking specific questions so that we actually will be able to compare different contractors. And this will be coming back to, you know, the staff will be, and one of the things I'm curious about is anything more you can tell us about the timeline. This will be coming back to council as a proposed RFP so we can, RFP proposal or draft RFP. Anyway, we will be able to review the draft. So it's not like we are making a final decision right now.
Maybe if I could offer a, maybe a middle ground on this to nearest point about giving direction. I totally appreciate that the trades are a broad church. So maybe if everyone's comfortable, sounds like we're okay making this a separate section with the guidance of what's in Bart's memo. And then maybe the one thing we could ask as a requirement is that they have a conversation with Bart or a representative of these broad trades, just to have an open conversation. Because I think what I hear from labor a lot is before they submit their RFP, give them enough time to have an hour with labor and just verify that they've had that conversation, that they're open to exploring it. So it's not a, it's not a, as the vice mayor is saying, it's not a commitment to move forward and use labor. But I think even an initial conversation with a representative is something I feel is really lacking. And I feel it's an hour of a developer's time. So that, that feels like a pretty good compromise about open-ended questions versus requiring something pretty simple.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith and Vice Mayor Nash. What comes to mind for me is the number of unions. And so if we're specific to one, then we're leaving out possibly 10 others. And so I'm wondering if, is there another way so that we're not excluding any labors as opposed to just using the one building trades?
The building trades is the umbrella for everything you see on his memo to the left. So if you're talking to Bart, you're kind of, you're sort of by proxy talking to a number of them.
So that concerns me a little bit because I've talked to a labor union representative last week who was not included in something, nothing with the city of Menlo Park. And so, and I still don't understand why. And so I'm, so I don't want to dive into that. So if we're picking one, that means we're excluding another. So, because I don't think this is all unions.
It wouldn't be limited, it wouldn't be limited though. Like if they did an hour with labor, Bart, I, I did a meeting earlier with Bart plus representatives from three different unions. And then the carpenters, you know, could be included in a meeting. So I think, I think it's really just about engaging. It's not having 50 meetings with 50 different unions. It's opening the door to having a conversation with a few representatives altogether who, who can gauge the willingness of them, the developer to use union labor. Because there are a few who just refuse to have a conversation and that, that doesn't feel right to me. So that's why I'm sort of saying, I, I'm not advocating, you know, 50 meetings. It's sort of one meeting, labor can decide who they bring that would represent the project in Menlo Park. And that sort of checks the requirement box, in, in my mind at least.
And we're assuming that whoever we choose for the RFP is going to hire specifically. So I feel like it's too prescriptive.
Well, I, I think that's where I was making the compromises. Maybe we don't go as far as saying they have to, but I think at least opening the door to engaging is a first step. Now, that's a Now that's a second question of if somebody refuses to engage with labor, are we going to disqualify them? I, I'm happy to table that question to the future. I just want to get the door open for the conversation. So that's, that's my compromise is not, not going the full like requiring everything, but
I am not supportive.
Fair enough, but I don't know how.
I think that we've made ourselves very clear. I think that we are, I do not want to box us into a corner where we need to see what, what is available, what is out there? How people are going to take this information and apply it to their RFP? And I, I resist making people sit down and talk. Hopefully they will do that on their own if they think that that's helpful. I, I personally will not support requiring someone to sit down.
So would we disagree? Do we vote? I mean, because it's a study session, do we need to vote on the recommendation or?
I think we just do sort of a kind of a, a poll on the, the direction. Like I just sort of sharing my thoughts. I, I think I would be more aligned with the idea of, of like, again, asking developers to provide information about their approach. And, and there is a couple of reasons, although I completely understand where you're coming from that, that backs that up. One, what we need is an overarching city policy for these things. And that doesn't exist. So then it becomes kind of like an ad hoc, which concerns me then about putting in these very clear sort of stipulations. And I, I'll have to admit that like the, the, the idea of, of like ha- having to have the union meeting, it's sort of, sort of giving me flashbacks of, of things like the diverse slate approach, which maybe some are familiar, which is like you, you have a job opening and you have to like include some person of color in the candidate poll. And like lots of people of color got included in candidate polls that they were never going to get hired for. So it becomes, and, and the NFL, this was routinely known as the Rooney Rule. Again, which ultimately didn't create the outcome. And, and so I, I, I would be concerned that this would be something similar. You would be forcing this thing that ended up just becoming this process. But I do hear where you're coming from. Like I'll be very honest. And so, so I don't know if like, we should just, about this issue about specifically like how we want to approach labor. The vice mayor and I are aligned with this idea of allowing the, the applicants to share with us their approach, examples of their, their past engagement. I know council member Schmidt wants very specifically to require a, a sit down. And so my, my question is like, where, where would council member Wise or where would council member Taylor be?
I think I would be more in line with the mayor and vice mayor at this point. I want to be very clear that I'm super appreciative of you bringing this up, council member Schmidt. I think this is very important. I just think at this stage, I would like to see, yes, how the unions have been engaged before, what the plan is. I just worry that tracking who's had a meeting with who and verifying that just given the number of unions that there are. And I just think that that would add a burden to our staff and also all the parties involved. So yes, I, but I, but it is, I think crucial that we include this in the RFP. And also to the mayor's point, I would also love to see a city policy or something on this, but that's obviously a bigger conversation. So, but thank you.
Thank you for the discussion and, and we will still have a labor standard. We, we can have a local hire. We can do that. And clearly we, we don't have the votes to do the rest of it. But I still have confidence in the RFP and what comes back to council. And there's always opportunity in the future to, to explore something else. And I do agree, we do need some policy.
Like I would just add that of the respondents to RFQ, I know of one, maybe even two, who have very extensive track record of, of, of hiring union labor on their projects. And, and I think we will see like, right? And that could be a key factor in you looking at the RFPs because them answering that question, it's going to be very extensive. And again, it could be the case across all. Again, there's a couple that I have some line of sight in that, like I say, I know for a very, you know, I, I know very much prioritize hiring, hiring union labor. And so, and, and so I, I think that that will be, you know, key.
I, I appreciate it. I, I know I don't have the votes for this one, just to be transparent. I plan to bring it up again when we talk about qualifying folks because I, I still feel strongly. And just to council member Wise's point, the nice thing is we wouldn't have to track it. It would create no administrative burden. We had six members of labor here in the audience. There's lots of interest in this project and in Menlo Park as, you know, really expressing our values when it comes to our local workforce. So it, it wouldn't be an extra administrative step because they are paying a lot of attention. And so I do plan to bring this up again when we qualify or disqualify, you know, our, our developers, so.
And that's exactly where I think we should be discussing it. Yeah. Put out the, our request or, you know, put it out as a guideline. And then we will discuss it when it comes back. Cause I think we all agree. It's just how we approach it.
I want your votes next time. That's right. Thanks.
Okay, unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to ask staff to recap the direction that they believe they have received. At this point, I'm glad I have my job and not my job.
All right, I'll start with the easy one, which is moving forward with an RFP. The teams that would be selected or invited to respond to the RFP would be the four that were in the recommendation plus Eden and Path. And then in terms of the RFP outline, there was a mention of the housing program having an AMI between 15 and 80%. Including information about ongoing community relations and lease up for development. The resident experience, some of the details to be added to section, to section eight in the outline. A new section regarding a request for information about workforce and labor standards that the respondents would respond to. And then being very clear about our approach and what we are requiring exactly upfront in terms of the units, especially the parking and the sensitivities around that. And there was a mention of a visiting tour of sites in the Bay Area. Sort of a separate matter, but potentially even inviting residents. I'm trying to find some way to, to get out and see some of the developments that have been done in the area by developers who responded. Menlo Park preferences stated in the RFP clearly. Emphasis on the community events, open house, examples and outcomes from past projects. Architectural style details, kind of setting the character of downtown. Emphasis on the heights, massing concepts, how it blends into downtown or how it would sort of affect downtown and its overall appearance. Openness to mixed incomes, different housing types, including market rate, potentially units that have doorsteps out front, sort of the town, townhouse style units or other unit types. Mindfulness of the events that do happen downtown and are ongoing. Community rooms, event spaces as part of development potentially. And circulation, traffic management being a significant item that we would like them to provide details about. And I believe that was the majority of what I'd captured. Anything else?
I think the circulation, traffic management will be a city responsibility at some point, not, not part of the RFP. Thank you.
If I may just add, I, I think there's two other things that were talked about, but I think that we agreed upon in terms of the financial impact to businesses. I think there was some conversation around that, but decided that that was not part of the RFP. And then also construction impact and mitigations. And I'd just like to highlight that there is already an item in seven, or excuse me, in six implementation plans, construction logistics plan that we've asked about. And if that was sufficient to leave in and build off from that, okay, thank you. And then maybe one thing around parking. I think we've heard a couple of different things about one-to-one replacement parking or what was in the RFQ, which is not exactly as Mr. Smith identified a one-to-one parking, but based upon some initial feedback that received on parking and just clarity so that we can provide that level of specificity in the RFP of what our expectations are for replacement parking.
And then one other thing I noted was that asking the, the responding developers what they believe the city responsibilities for the project would be and, and how they see the city role.
Okay, so following up, you want clarity on whether we're at one-to-one or 506, correct? Like whether, what, what the council is comfortable with. So I would prefer one-to-one replacement, but let's go, go down to see where people are. Are they at the 506 or are they at, which is 560, right? 563 or something? It's one, 556, so 556 or 506. So where are folks at?
I can jump in. I, I'm one-to-one. I, I feel like that such a hot button issue that we just have to spend extra time on that. And I would also ask maybe as part of our outreach, we specialize a little bit of our attention on dispelling this myth that we're eliminating all the parking and not replacing any of it. So, which is not true, right? It's just a matter of negotiating what it looks like and where. And so, um, yeah, one, one-to-one for me.
And again, I'll let others, obviously that being the target. So as, as I see it, but, but want others to chime in. If, if they would prefer to go with what, what was in RFQ.
I would agree that one-to-one is preferred.
I agree.
I actually would go with what's in the RFQ and have a target of more, but go with what's in the RFQ, which, and basically find out how do they, what is the plan as is outlined in your RFP proposal? How do they plan to achieve the parking strategy? But not to require one-to-one.
Okay, so you got some direction there. I don't know if you got clarity, but you got direction. Was there anything else? Was, was that, that, well, vice mayor?
I thought the number of the units, the range of affordability sounded like there were, we'd given conflicting instructions. Do you need more clarity on that? Or maybe I misunderstood?
I think it falls within the range that there were descriptions of between 15 to 80% of AMI, which would be to like extremely low to low income.
I thought there was also some comment about market rate. That's what confused me.
Yeah, I made the comment about market rate. I, well, I think I was the only one who made the comment, so it probably falls through the cracks. But I, I do want to reiterate that like I, I see value in projects of, of mixed income. So I, I will say that.
Well, we will put together a draft and bring it back. And you can ensure that it meets everything that we talked about here.
Just to ballpark apologies if I miss this, what, what's the timeline roughly? Cause I'm sure we'll get that question.
We're looking at bringing it back this summer. So in terms of when that will be, obviously it'll take a little bit of, of time to prepare a full RFP and, and do the evaluation of that. Knowing that there's one meeting in July, maybe more like the late summer, August-ish range. And then in terms of response time that we would give the development teams, I think with, with the RFQ, we gave 60 days. Given the additional detail and amount of information we're requesting, I think a minimum of 90 days would be probably worth letting them think through that. So that gets us to somewhere in the fall potentially.
Thanks.
I just want to say, I'm always impressed with how you seem unflappable and have the answers. And thank you so much. It was a good report and good presentation and questions and answers.
On that note, I'm not going to make eye contact with anyone and I'm going to adjourn. Well, I'm going to adjourn to close session. I remembered. And so adjourn to, to, to close session. And so adjourn to close session.
Hello, I'm Mayor Drew Combs and we are reconvening the special June 3rd City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in council chambers. I'd like to introduce City Attorney Narra Doherty for a report out on the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one reportable action. The council directed in a three in favor, one opposed, and one abstention vote to initiate or intervene or join in an action, specifically the city and county of San Francisco at all versus Donald J. Trump, case number 25CV01350WHO. Other particulars of the lawsuit shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry.
Right. Thank you very much, City Attorney Doherty. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.